All right, I want to open up this meeting. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask our clerk now to please do a roll call.
Counselor Tesh. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Here.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Saniget.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Coopero.
Here, here, here.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Here.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Ten members present, you have a call.
Thank you, clerk. All right, let's start with our memorials and celebratory resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Counsel President DeJesus and all members of the Council for LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas during LGBTQ plus Pride Month, we recognize the determination and resilience of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically, and affirm our obligation to uphold the dignity of all people and protect the most vulnerable among us. And whereas the law enforcement raid of the Stonewall in New York City in 1969 sparked demonstrations that served as a call to action and continue to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. And whereas members of the LGBTQ plus community face disparities in education, employment, healthcare, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness, while LGBTQ plus youth, especially those of color, are at an increased risk of suicide, homelessness, bullying, violence, and human trafficking. And whereas while substantial progress has been made since Stonewall, there are many states in which LGBTQ plus individuals still lack protections for fundamental rights and dignity in hospitals, schools, public accommodations, and other spaces. And whereas despite facing discrimination, inequality, and overt acts of violence, members of the LGBTQ plus community continue to celebrate their identities and contributions to the United States. And whereas the Chelsea LGBTQ plus Coalition planned to hold its annual pride flag raising ceremony Saturday, June 1st from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Washington Square Park, now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes June 2024 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Chelsea, recognizes the valuable contributions of the LGBTQ plus across the United States, and reaffirms our commitment to standing in solidarity with LGBTQ plus Americans in their ongoing struggle against discrimination and injustice.
Thank you. How does the Counsel wish to proceed?
Roll call vote on adoption. There are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Any speakers? Counselor Saniget.
I just want to say I had the pleasure of attending flag raising at Washington Park on Saturday, and there were many people, and it was a wonderful celebration, and the comments made were extremely powerful, and I was proud to be an ally.
Thank you, counselor. Seeing no other speakers, we'll continue with a roll call vote. Oh, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Pardon me for my tardiness. Just want to again congratulate the maker of the resolution. As just was heard, we did a flag raising this past weekend. It's great that we'll come together and understand what other folks are going through. So I just want to say, let's celebrate throughout the month. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. All right, clerk, take us through a roll call vote.
Roll call vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh. Absent Counselor Taylor. Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, zero opposed, one absent. Resolution is affirmed.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by the Counsel President and all members of the City Council commemorating Juneteenth. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and the enslaved were free, more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas African Americans who had been slaves in the Southwest began commemorating June 19th, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And whereas Juneteenth celebrations declined significantly as many states began passing Jim Crow laws disenfranchising African Americans and restricting their ability to participate in the political process. And whereas Texas became the first state to make Juneteenth a paid state holiday in 1979. And whereas local art activist Ben Hayth, founder of the National Juneteenth Celebration Foundation, created the Juneteenth flag in 1997, later revising its design in 2000. And whereas Juneteenth became a federal holiday in 2021 after President Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act into law. And whereas the Chelsea Black Community, CBC, will hold its annual Juneteenth celebration in Washington Park on Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Chelsea, and continues to support the nationwide celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to better understand the collective experiences that have shaped our nation.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor?
Roll call vote to adopt. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Do we have any speakers? Yes, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I thank the maker of the resolution. Juneteenth is the time we celebrate. Thank God for all the progress that's been made. We recognize it's a federal holiday so we can go out and celebrate. It's not just a day off, but it's also a day to, you know, get to know more about things that you don't know about, you know? Sometime we celebrate different holidays for different reasons because we don't understand the holidays, and we just think, you know, whether it's, you know, Pride Week or, you know, here we have Juneteenth. If you don't know it, it's an opportunity that you have to come out and celebrate. We have a group that's always putting on things here in Chelsea. The last few years, we've had great Juneteenth celebrations. Seems like they grow every year. I'm proud of the city and what we do here for the celebration and display. And it's my prayer that we will continue to have the support, not only of the, you know, the presenters, but also the neighbors, the business, the whole community where we can come out and strengthen ourselves together. Yes, we have come a long ways from the racial, to improve racial justice, but we still got a long way to go, and this is a celebration that we can all play a part of and make a difference in our community, and I'm proud of Chelsea, what we have done in the past. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, then we'll proceed with a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor. Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, none absent. Resolution is affirmed.
Thank you. Now moving on to our, is there an amendment from Counselor Kelly Garcia that we are, we're going to move it to? Never mind, that's coming in afterwards. Never mind. Okay, we'll be moving into public hearing.
First on the agenda is a public hearing for a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 34, Article 12, Section 34-158(c)(2) regarding operating hours for marijuana retailers.
Okay, do we have any speakers? Please join us at the podium. State your name, address, and you'll have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Richard Su. I am co-founder of Harbor House Collective located at 80 Eastern Avenue here in Chelsea. I'm here to speak in favor of this amendment. I've been after this for quite a few months now. This is, you know, an amendment to accomplish two things, really. The first thing is to really help the cannabis industry normalize and really de-stigmatize because given the three-year-long presence we've had in this city, we've had very little to no incidents and very little risk to public safety and health. The second thing is to honestly help Chelsea compete. There's many facilities in the area that are open at later hours than we are, and we'd love to make Chelsea a destination for this purpose. We employ a couple dozen Chelsea residents. We contribute, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue, and I think it would be advantageous for Chelsea to give us a couple more hours to operate. I have here with me.
Hi, my name is Julia Crowley. I'm here representing Green Star Herbals doing Business Rise down in Chelsea. Very similar reasons to support this potential expansion in hours for our operation. Not only would it allow customers to continue to access safe, reliable, and tested material outside of the hours currently available, it would allow us to compete with those locations around us that are open later, including the city of Boston, Somerville, and Cambridge, who all have hours that exceed 9:00 p.m. It would put us on parity with liquor stores, and we similarly see no increased risk to public health or safety with increased hours. Our incidents similarly very minor and not appear to correlate with time of day, and from a public health perspective, increased access to safe, legal, and tested product only benefits public health. Be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to next item on the agenda.
We move on to a public hearing for a proposed zoning amendment to Part 2, Chapter 34 of the Chelsea Zoning Code of Ordinances related to body art establishments.
Do we have any public speaking for this amendment? No? Okay. Moving on to the next.
We have a public hearing for a proposed zoning amendment to Part 2, Chapter 34 of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances regarding the floodplain overlay district.
Anyone in the room wish to speak? Okay, moving on. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah, I'd ask the clerk if we can take those three amendments out of order and vote on them if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections.
I object.
Counselor Brown.
I mean, I'd like to, if you want to vote on them, we can vote on them 1, 2, 3, but I don't see, there are three different orders. You have a marijuana retail in here, you have the body art in the Florida District, so I'll vote on them one each, but I object to voting them all at once.
All right, Counselor, so I believe that Counselor Robinson is moving them out of order in the agenda, but they will still be voted on separately.
Separately.
It's just so that the public can listen to our votes. Okay? All right, seeing no objections, we'll proceed with a vote.
First zoning agenda, whereas the city of Chelsea has adopted an ordinance as to the issuance of licenses to marijuana establishments, and whereas the Chelsea Licensing Commission, as opposed to the city's land use boards, is authorized to regulate the use and hours of licensed establishments throughout Chelsea. Now therefore obey it ordered that the revised Code of Ordinances of the city of Chelsea be as amended by repealing Chapter 34, Article 12, Section 34-158(c)(2), which reads marijuana retailers are prohibited from operating between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. And be a further order that the proposed zoning amendment be reviewed and that a public hearing be scheduled to discuss the proposed, pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40a. A public hearing has already been held before the Planning Board and public hearing before the Council. Roll call vote is requested.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
So should it be 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? Or we voted on it 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m.?
So I will ask our Counsel clerk to please clarify the exact wording on what we are voting on before we proceed.
It's my understanding under the current city practice, under their license, they are required to close after 9:00 p.m. regardless. The proposal before you will treat them as other licensed establishments. They have to go through the Licensing Commission as opposed to have their license be granted by special permit, so they'll be able to open later than 9:00 p.m. if they choose as a condition of their license.
So why are we voting on this today if they haven't gotten approval from the authority that they need?
The Planning Board has already granted approval. Going forward, they would be going before the Licensing Commission to get permission, just like any establishment that has a alcohol license or any other institution that has established hours.
So if you don't mind, if we can ask our attorney if she could just define the 9:00 p.m. to the 9:00 a.m. hours?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So Counselor, what we did in this zoning, because this is a zoning amendment, is we put the hours of operation, which we don't usually do. We allow the licensing department to determine by each establishment, depending on, you know, their neighborhoods and their butters, how late they can open. So what we are trying to correct is this error that every time they want to do something, like change their hours, they'd have to go through the whole zoning process as opposed to going before the Licensing Commission, which is the commission established to manage the hours of all retail stores.
You can stay. You can stay.
All right, I was just a little confused. I know we've done this in the past, far the language to bring it before us, but I just still not clear. I just didn't want them to, you know, the hours of operations from 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. It just gives them a whole lead of opportunity to open more than we may want them to open. So that's my only concern. I mean, other than that, thank you for the explanation.
Just to be clear, they don't get to choose their hours.
I know.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but we don't have them in writing.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay. Seeing no further questions, we'll proceed with a vote. Counselor Vega.
Yeah, I have a question for Cheryl. I think we were kind of having this, I just want to know if.
Just to be clear, you no longer have a conflict.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk, please take us through a vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Zoning amendment is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to the next amendment. Yeah, but because we took things out of order, it takes us a little, it's a big packet, long agenda today.
If a zoning amendment introduced by Counsel President DeJesus reviving Part 2, Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances, providing definitions for body art, definitions, operating hours, and zoning in place where they allowed by right.
All right. Seeing. Seeing no objections, Counselor Coopero would like to speak on it.
Yes, who am I to oppose anybody that wants to be a pink cushion? If you want to be a pink cushion, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Seeing no other speakers, I believe we can proceed. Ready roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson. Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Proposed zoning amendment is adopted.
Thank you, clerk.
Next, we have a proposed zoning amendment introduced by Counsel President DeJesus related to the city's floodplain overlay district.
All right, motions on the floor?
Roll call vote on adoption. What this does, it allows us to buy flood insurance if we adopt it.
Okay. Seeing no objections. Any speakers? No? All right, moving on to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesh.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Proposed zoning amendment is adopted.
Thank you, clerk.
We move on to public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget.
All right, do we have any speakers for the public hearing on the proposed budget? Please state your name. Also, please state your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Lina Zavar. I'm not a resident of Chelsea, but I am the Director of Policy at La Colaborativa. We are here to stand before you today to advocate for your support in the HOMES Act, subsequently your assistance in strategizing around the fundings.
Please hold one second. I think that this item will be in the next round for public speaking. This one is just related to our budget, our city budget.
So I will, I will give you an opportunity to speak right after we go through any speakers
related to our budget.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, we know that we will have a big group of youth speaking today. If we could make some time for anyone who's not part of the youth group to go first, because I think there are less people here, and then the youth, if you guys have an opportunity to group, if there are any similar comments that are being made, testimonies, then that would be great. You all have four minutes to speak, and just please remember to state your name and your address. All right, we can proceed with, with anyone who has any comments on the budget. No one has any comments on the budget. Okay, all right, we'll be moving on then. In that case, we'll be moving on to our. Okay. Okay, all right, so you guys are here to speak on the budget. Okay, anyone who's here to speak on the budget, please go up to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Chelsea City Council. For those who don't know me, my name is Jose Castellano. I am about to graduate from Chelsea High School and serve as a student representative for Chelsea Public Schools and the Vice Chair for Chelsea Youth Commission. I am here today to talk about a serious issue affecting youth in our city and state. For years, we've been fighting for equitable youth jobs funding, and we will continue to fight for equitable funding, but for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, youth jobs funding in Massachusetts has been cut immensely, and the proposed budget is now 19.9 million. It may seem like a lot of money, but this is just for the whole Commonwealth. So this is a share, not just for Chelsea. And the cut directly impacts programs like the one at La Colaborativa, and also impacts youth like me across the Commonwealth. The youth program at La Colaborativa has been instrumental in my growth and development. Through La Colaborativa, I've had the opportunity to testify at state offices, including Attorney General, Executive Office of Education, and Mass Governor Healy, while also being invited to keynote at Harvard Law and speak at press conferences at the State House. This program helped me discover my passion for community organizing and public policy, leading me to pursue a degree in political science and economics at Bridgewater State this fall. Youth jobs are not just a stepping stone for future careers. For many, they are a critical source of income. In our community, these jobs help young people support their families, pay bills, and even contribute to rent. Cutting this fund means taking away the main source of income for young individuals who rely on these jobs to help their families make ends meet. I myself was once a shy and introverted person, but now I am confident public speaker and representative of my community. Programs like La Colaborativa are vital for youth development and economic stability. We often say that youth are the future, but cutting our jobs sends a contradictory message across the Commonwealth. I urge the Council to help allocate more money to youth jobs funding because every young person deserves a chance to experience life-changing opportunities and to help support their families. By investing in our youth, we ensure that more individuals can succeed, thrive, and contribute positively to our community. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Herman Santa Maria. I'm 18 years old and live at 48 Hertz Street. I'm a resident here in Chelsea, and I've been working with La Colaborativa. I've been doing so for two years due to how well-involved they are with, not just the community, but the youth that make up a large portion of it. The job I've had at La Colaborativa has, has been a major factor in my development. I first worked with them as an intern in graphic design during the spring 2022, and La Colaborativa has been supporting me and helping me grow from a mature and professional and emotional standpoint. The time I spent employed as a youth intern at La Colaborativa has given me the opportunity to explore career paths and experiment with what I would want to do down the line after high school with positions in STEM, graphic design, and the theater field. I've had a position for working with, I've had a passion for working with computers and medical equipment that La Colaborativa has helped me work with, either by taking me and other youth to field trips to MIT or running programs with UMass Boston to get youth into the IT field. I'm just one of many youth that have entered La Colaborativa with a blank slate and come out with opportunities in front of me and a bright future to look towards. I've received help with planning out a budget and a plan for college to help me get an associate in data analytics and a major in psychology, a field I wanted to get into because of the mental health services provided at La Colaborativa. I'm one of the many youth that have been able to benefit from the opportunities La Colaborativa provides to keep youth earning money and developing workplace skills and professionalism, helping them feel heard as teenagers yet still mature into reliable people with a plan after high school. What I want is for other youth to have the opportunity to develop the same way I have and to get the same chance to grow, and this is why I'm asking the city of Chelsea to please consider funding youth jobs this summer. More programs like La Colaborativa's summer program would enable the possibility to help youth in this city and community to lay out a bright future and a bright path for youth in the community. And thank you for your time. My name was Herman Santa Maria.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rahel Heilamichael, and I live on 43 Garland Street here in Chelsea, Mass. And I'm here to speak on behalf of La Colaborativa to make a few statements and remarks as a parent of a youth attending this program. There are a couple of benefits that I have witnessed, but I'll try to say a few, or I'll try to summarize as much as possible. The first thing that I see this program has helped students is to save funds for for future college, for college life, meaning as a result of the job that this program offers, students and youth can save money either for college funds or to help their family and siblings at home. The second thing that I have witnessed is this program helps young youth, young teenagers, to get ready for jobs or to join the workforce. Particularly, it teaches them responsibilities to take tasks assigned to them. It teaches them to be on time. It teaches them to the importance of teamwork. So this is a great program for youth to join and to develop a good work ethic for the future. This program also teaches the youth at a young age to manage time wisely. It helps them to prioritize. It helps them to be effective and efficient in tasks set before them. So it's a wonderful program that I have witnessed. This opportunity or this program again provides a work experience and therefore prepares the youth to be, for future job interviews. It helps them to develop a rich resume as a result. This program also helps for college admissions because on admissions, as you all know, people want to see a holistic person applying. So if the youth at this age can work and can also be good in their studies, they will have a better chance of being accepted at college. So it's a wonderful program, again, providing the youth this opportunity. I have also witnessed that this program provides youth with a community service. Here, there are two advantages. One, the youth at a young age will learn the importance of serving the community. It will also help build a humane nature with them. It also helps them to be caring and be respectful for the elderly and the young and the needy. And I believe they will be wonderful citizens as a result of this early exposure to community services. Last but not least, I would also say this program helps to keep our youth, our children, out of the streets, and it helps them use their time wisely to become good citizens. It helps them to be busy in a very productive way. I am sure other parents will have a lot to say, but with the time given to me, this is what I could say for today. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you. So Johan, Johan, se llama Johan. Tu crees que tu me puedes compartir una copia de tu testimonio para yo poder compartirla con los demás de mis colegas?
Hágale.
Muchas gracias, mi amor. So just, just for translation purposes, I asked for him to share with us a copy of his testimony so I can share with all of you guys.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lopez, and I live on one oh six Webster Ave, Chelsea, Mass. Youth jobs are at risk. Not only youth jobs, but our future. Everywhere you turn, you turn, we're being told you are the future, but then continue to let us down by dramatically cutting our youth funds. What future if we can't develop new skills and take advantage of big opportunities at a young age? What future if we can't build and help those that are counting on us? What future if the state continues to let us down? Each youth standing here tonight has its own unique story. Many families depend on these youth, counting on them to provide, to put food on the table, and to keep the lights on. The heartbreaking reality is when young souls believe there is no other way out, they are forced to turn to the streets. Youth violence very much exists, and youth violence continues till this very moment. According to youth.gov under federal data, each day approximately twelve young people are victims of homicide and almost fourteen are treated into emergency departments. This will continue to happen if our budget keeps getting, keeps getting cut. Less money means fewer youth jobs. Less youth jobs means more youth can be on the street. This is a reality, and you can't hide from it. This is a devastating truth, and we need a change now. I realize we need a change now, not next week, not next month, not next year, but now. There are so many youth out there in this very room with so much potential, and they don't even know it. Are you feeling lost? Well, a youth program like La Colaborativa can help you figure out your worth and your potential. Yes, we are the future. Now, help us realize our potential and shape that future together by helping youth fund programs like La, like La Colaborativa this summer. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jamiel Gero. I live on one oh two Chestnut Street. I'm eighteen years old, and I work at the collaborative, and I'm a Chelsea resident. Having the opportunity to have a job like this is truly a blessing. This job has had a deep impact on me as well as on hundreds other youth that have worked in the collaborative. My social life, mental state, character development, job development, morals, and people's skills all have changed due to the fact that, like, that jobs like these exist. My coworkers and I have written and acted in plays we created with little to no experience, plays targeted to different audiences. With these plays, we prove that little kids do not need an iPad or to watch Cocoon Mullen in order to be entertained. But making a play from scratch by the youth of Chelsea is power enough to put a smile on their face. I found my passion through this job, which is acting. Growing up, I played soccer for eight years, and I, and I always thought I'd want to be a soccer player until I performed in front of an audience and loved it. That is the true power of youth jobs, finding who you are. None of this should be taken away. Endless amounts of opportunity will be thrown away. Jobs like these let children stay away from drugs and gang violence. Jobs like these create a safe work environment and opportunities to let the youth grow as people while letting them make a stable income to support them and their families. Working, working for an organization that helps your community is truly a privilege. It really makes you realize your city beyond what you see from the eye. You see all the good in Chelsea, but then you see the flaws which make you want a better Chelsea. Having a job like this makes you want to work harder. I'm sure everywhere in Massachusetts has street crime and violence. If funding was increased, there would be less youth on the street selling drugs involved in gangs. Because the result of less youth jobs and lack of funding is putting youth back onto the streets. No police department and no citizen should have to pay the price of street violence by the youth because the state deems it unnecessary to fund youth jobs. I assume you, working for the city, you'd like to better the future. I'm here to tell you a youth's future, a youth's life is important. If you want Chelsea to be a better place, please provide the funding. I'm here to speak after me. So think deeply. How bad do you want the youth of Chelsea to succeed? Because if you truly believe in the future of Chelsea could improve, you'd believe in the youth's future too. I'm asking the representatives of my city, make the right call, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I am a resident in Chelsea, one oh two Chestnut Street. I've lived in Chelsea all my life. As a parent of a youth leader at the collaborative, we have lived in Chelsea all of our, all our lives. My son has had the opportunity to work with such a great corporation. His growth has been amazing. The involvement within the city has been remarkable. Unfortunately, I have recently been informed that the funding to the youth program decreased drastically. I remember my son coming home from one day to another and saying, Mom, this is my last day of work due to funding. This brought a lot of emotions and worrisome to my home. The youth appreciate being able to work at such an establishment. Many youth depend on working to help their homes, families. We are all living in a world where the cost of, of living is extremely high. Other interns may purchase, may need to purchase their own items, their own needs, so that they do not depend on their parents. Not being able to support income to their family can lead to our youth making very poor decisions, make, which would be going as far as trying to get involved with illegal street drugs. Not being at work around the, not being at work around the year also exposes the youth to be more around the street life, and we all know it can lead to violence and dangers. The youth, youth can be less exposed to drugs and gangs by being occupied at the collaborative with a construction, constructive schedule, which helps them occupy themselves, focus on their core hearts, and prepare for their future. Moreover, since it's a year-round program, the youth can spend more time in a safe environment rather than up and down the streets. The collaborative offers a lot of support to the youth. I have met many supervisors who are extremely dedicated to the youth. Some of these youth look up to being in a safe environment as well, also making money and learning for their future. There are mentorships, there are mental health aspects in the program, which I think we all youth can benefit from and can provide them a safe environment instead of being in the streets. By providing the funds to our youth, we are giving them an exposure to becoming much more successful men and women in, in the, sorry. We are, by providing the funds on our youth, we are exposing them to become much more successful, successful men and women in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Stacy Smith, and I am a mom here in Chelsea, and I live at sixty-two Grove Street. And normally, I've come to the council with many other things of topics. But tonight, something alarmed me over the weekend. I had got a correspondence that budgets and things were being cut for the youth jobs for the children in the summer in the community. And I can say that I personally have supervised children from the collaborative, working with the DPW my own self, cleaning the streets of Chelsea. It was a really strenuous job, but every single day those kids showed up, dedicated, ready to work. They did the job with a smile on their face. We were all became friends. And it was a really good experience in over the past, I'm gonna say, five years, even though La Colaborativa has been here for much longer, it has grown into something that is more than just a small nook in Chelsea. It's grown into something that has been able to contribute to the well-being and the livelihood of the community on a broader aspect, and it touches much more people's homes. So if there is a way that our city can help this budget, I would strongly urge that we do so because, like other folks in the room stated, it takes our children off the streets. Our children need a place to go, a daily schedule, guidance, support, strong structures around positive examples, and collaborative, La Colaborativa provides all of that and then some. And I really feel that this is important and it's critical in our city because every day I walk down my street and I, I have to dodge and navigate through different obstacles that are in my way, and I'm a forty-three-year-old woman. And I can't imagine how young children without guidance could navigate through that. So I think that providing the funds to the children, which we say that they are our future, we are, we should invest in our future as best and as much as we can so that they feel a sense of belonging and they feel that they can grow. A lot of us also, a lot of talent in our community gets overlooked because of money, and financial things are always getting in our way. So I would just, again, please ask you guys to really consider helping with the funds for this and maybe in help with resources to help them allocate more funds if, if council or the city can do that for future reference, just so that there are many resources that we can pull because we're a heavily densely populated city, and we have a, a, a lot of youth here that just need that support. So thank you guys for your time.
My name is Faith Dunbar, and I live at seventy-six Harvard Street, Chelsea, MA. It has come to my attention that La Colaborativa will not be able to provide as many jobs to the youth as they did last year due to state budget cuts. This means that many youth in the city will not have the opportunity to be employed at La Colaborativa this summer, including myself. I need this job because La Colaborativa teaches people real-life experiences to prepare, to prepare me for the real world. There are not a lot of youth jobs in Chelsea that hire at my age, so La Colaborativa is helping a lot of your kids, young kids, who actually are motivated and need the job. Some of us need to work because we are going through hard times. I need to earn money to help support me and my family because we are having hard times finding jobs and struggling with housing problems. I also need to save money while I'm young so I can go to the colleges that I want and change my situation. That's why I think that Chelsea, that's why I think that the City of Chelsea should invest in youth jobs this summer. Youth jobs improve social and emotional health that provides young people with jobs, job training and education that plays a big part in their skill development for different career fields. They also hold youth accountable for their grades and also have academic support if needed that help our youth stay focused on important things. The more spots we lose, the more kids will, will be hanging around in the streets with the wrong group of people. While La Colaborativa would rather have them doing something productive. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Zacharias. I'm a seventeen-year-old student at Chelsea High School. I live at eighty-one Willow Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts. I am here to echo the voices of the youth, urging the investment to our future, supporting youth jobs. As youth people, we are the heartbeat of the community, and our well-being is intrinsically tied to the safety and the prosperity of our cities. Youth jobs aren't just about employment. They're about empowerment. They provide us with the tools of the opportunities to shape our destinies, contribute pos- posi- positiv- uh, positively to society and build together futures for ourselves and those around us. When you invest in youth jobs, you're not only investing in individuals, you're investing in the collective well-being of our communities. You're providing youth people with the alternatives of the streets, steering them away from violence and crime and towards path of the productive and success, and success. Youth jobs aren't a handout. They're a hand up. They give us the chance to earn our own way, to develop essential skills and gain valuable work experience. They will serve us throughout our lives. By investing in youth jobs, you're, you're investing in the future leaders, innovators, and changemakers of our society. You're nurturing, you're nurturing talents, fostering resilience, and building stronger, more vibrant communities for generations to come. So I urge you to listen to the voices of the youth and recognize the importance of the, of in, investing in our futures through youth jobs together. We can create safer, more prosperous communities whenever young, young persons have the opportunity to thrive and succeed. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Armando Rivera. I live on seven Prescott Avenue, and I'm a resident of Chelsea. I wanted to speak on behalf of the, the youth as well on the importance of a reconsideration of the budget. Because of the statewide cuts, it is imperative now that the city, whether we plan to it or not, that we need to step up to, to react to this. Because as a former facilitator and supervisor for many of these youth, leading the performing arts cohort, I've been able to, in spite of myself, and more than I intended, and to find myself as an educator, as a mentor, I was able to become that for many of them. And it makes me proud to see how much they've grown, to see them speak here today, to have been part of that growth for them, to give them the opportunity and to be part of their journey in becoming artists or becoming independent speakers or finding their voice as writers, as creators. And yeah, I gotta say it's cool to see people like Kim, Ashley, Faith, Jay, Arman, Johan, someone else is here, I'm sure, Gabby, all people, all young people that I've had the pleasure of leading in a cohort, some of whom I've had the pleasure of hiring outside of the collaborative in theater as professionals. Faith was my assistant stage manager for a show last summer. Jay was hired as an actor for one of my shows last fall. And another youth, Joshua, is currently my assistant stage manager and acting in a show that I'm currently directing right now here in Chelsea. This stuff leads to jobs, and it leads to opportunities because I wouldn't have met them if they didn't have a youth job. To get interested, to make mistakes, to be curious. them if they didn't have a youth job, to get interested, to make mistakes, to be curious. And that's what we're at risk of losing, is access to the bridge to meet people, not just me, but people who really want to make their lives to be mentors. My colleague William Palacios has led and saved lives every day through kids that got a youth job, weren't ready for a youth job, and he took them in at his nonprofit at Basement Tribe. And I've seen him save lives. And it's inspired me to do the same in the little ways that I know how. So when Jay calls me or when another youth calls me and says, can I just sit in on your rehearsal? I'm glad they had the opportunity to meet me and become brave enough to go somewhere. We talk about these kids not being, wanting to be on the streets. I know they want to be somewhere else because they spend their nights till ten-thirty in a rehearsal room just watching other professional actors work. And I would hate for these kids to lose that opportunity. I would hate for the city of Chelsea to lose the opportunity of an actual thing that's working. It's working. I trained a youth for two weeks who had graduated from the program, was gonna take over my position, and now his job is at risk. So how do we create legacy? Does it all have to be charity? I don't want to believe that the time that I spent at La Collaborative is now just gone because the legacy couldn't continue. We, we are in a moment right now that we have to spend more money. It's costing us more. It's gonna hurt us. But I would hate to lose them. And that's why I'm here today. And I'm proud that I'm here today because I didn't plan on it. But the fact that I see like half a dozen kids that I, I had the chance to touch their lives, I'm pretty proud of that. And I hope that you can be a part of helping us all be proud of that. Because man, these kids are cra- like crazy good at what they do. So help us keep doing that. Thank you.
Hello, members of the City Council and members of the city of Chelsea. My name is Jennifer Clodder. I live at eleven Orange Street in Chelsea, Massachusetts. I have lived here for twenty years and I come up before you today to implore you to support the youth of Chelsea through La Collaborativa with the Youth Employment Program. This is not just about the youth, it is also about the amazing things I have seen La Collaborativa do. They are cornerstone in our community, they protect the vulnerable, they weave our community together in a way that makes our community stronger. And to me, investing in La Collaborativa is one of the best ways to use the money that our city has available. So I'm, I'm gonna keep it short there because so many other people have brought up so many other important ideas, and this is just one other part that I think's really important when you're making your decisions about the budget. So thank you very much.
Hi, members of the City Council of Chelsea. My name is Ever Garcia. I am eighteen years old and I am a graduate of the class of two thousand twenty-four of Chelsea High School. I migrated to this country six years ago and I've been living in Chelsea for over four of them. I've applied and been accepted at the local community college of Bunker Hill and now I'm pursuing a professional career of engineering. This summer, I was offered a job at the Collabora- at, at, La Collaborativa, teaching English to young children. And I've been told that due to the cutting the budget of the, of the school, of the, sorry, of the city, that job is at risk. Living in this country has been a great opportunity for me to pursue things that I could never imagine in other places and I'm looking towards being a really good part of the society that I've been able to live in for this great part of my life. The decisions I've been able to make due to the support of people around me have been something I'm incredibly grateful for. And, sorry, I just think that, that, I wanna be, I wanna be a part of everything and that the two, the limitations of my economy is something that gets harder every single day. My mother has been working hard for me to be able to make decisions towards my future and I wanna be as responsible and as work, hardworking as she has been for me and for other people. That's everything I have to say. Thank you so much.
This has been my sixth time being here. I've talked to a lot of you and it's been a pleasure to meet some of you. Most of you I know from my job. I've been working here since the summer last year and it's been one of the most amazing things to work here. I have learned so much, so many skills, so many people that can help me. Not that long, one of my bosses kinda left and she was like a mother to me. We were in the same cohort last summer that we'll call her was Police Academy. During that time, I was going through a hard time at home. I barely told anyone about that, but she was the only one that opened her arms for me. After that, I started talking to her more, like she was a mother to me. After, I started to meet William Palacios, a big mentor to me, and Peter, Peter Lopez, Peter Lopez. We found out they were cousins and it's been one of the most best things to meet a piece of, he was a mental health instructor, mentor, my bad. And he taught me a lot of things, how to control my anger, how to, how to let my emotions go out sometime. During this time, I was pleasured to meet everyone, to work there and to help out everyone. While I was in Collab, I worked with a bunch of communities. We went to Boston for one time to get more money for youth. It was a pleasure to meet other youth that were interested in talking about how to get us more job and how to get kids out of the street. One of the big, big problems now in our generation is kids now, since ten years old, have been taking drugs, vaping, or even having guns. Imagine your child, can I even be walking outside because they might be scared, something might happen to them. That's why we at Collab have to, we give opportunities to people to work and to be somewhere safe where they can be learning new skills for their, for their future and for their parents to be more calm. Because as a youth right now, I've been helping my parents to pay rent, to buy food, to pay bills. There's some other families, some other youths that I know that help a lot with their families because they might be going through a crisis or through a big problem. Some of, of the youth I know are immigrants. It's a hard time being an immigrant because you never have opportunities like everyone else. People judge you sometimes, they call you names, and some jobs don't even accept you for that because they think that you're not enough, that they'd rather have people with papers. But at Collab, they open your arms for immigrants so they can work for, so they can work there, be somewhere safe and learn new skills. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the City of Chelsea Committee. My name is Jaceni Alfaro. I'm a resident of twelve High Street in the city of Chelsea, but also a school committee member for District Eight. And I'm not as eloquent as all of my youth that I wanna ask everybody to do an applause for them. All I can say is that I'm with you and I ask for you also to put some money on the side for this great program that La Collaborativa have had. Some of you have benefited from that program, some of you have seen all of the professionals that have been also coaching these members, these young adults. Some of these young adults are being placed in offices like the City Hall, has been placed in offices that are mentors to them. Some of them will have the opportunity to work with you, Calvin. They're, they will learn all those skills. Now, all I can say is that we really need your support. As always, the city of Chelsea comes last to help. We are asking, we know that they already went and did their diligent at the city, from the city into the state, they went and asked for money, this big budget that is there, this big pie that is at the city, I mean, at the state, that is now coming, a little of that money is coming here to Chelsea and I ask you to please allocate some of the money so that we can prevent a lot of youth violence, that these youth can keep busy so that we can have more recreational programs. Because of lack of recreational programs, some of our youth in the past has gotten in trouble and we don't want that. I am a very proud resident of the city of Chelsea. I also work outside of Chelsea and when I meet a lot of the youth, they don't have the summer youth employment program that La Collaborativa have. So I leave you with that in mind and I ask you for your support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mayra Valderas and, hi, City Councils. I am from the school committee, District Four, and I also come to say that our youth needs your support, especially because this is the future. Everybody already testified what are the consequences of not having this support and I feel that we have to make a, a miracle or something to make it happen because we know that, I mean, we have to support them to be, you know, out of the streets and, and they're the future. If we, if we build them so early with these couple skills and being, you know, especially being themselves and be, you know, know what they want and, and be secure themselves that they can go beyond anything, I think we're gonna have a good citizens and a good community for long. Thank you.
Before proceeding with the rest of the agenda, I want to just fully disclose that I am also an employee at La Collaborativa. Although my department has no connection to any of the youth employment activities, funding, or budget, I just want to speak real briefly on the fact and just clarify for the viewers at home that the city of Chelsea, as in the body of counselors before you, have not decreased any youth jobs funding. The state allocates funding for youth jobs and in the city of Chelsea, La Collaborativa is involved in distributing those funds, allocating to as many positions there are available. So I just want to clarify that in this year's budget, there was no decrease in any youth-related budget line item. If anything, I would say that my fellow counselors and I have prioritized a lot of the needs and that is due to the fact that the youth continue to come to this chamber and raise their voices as you did today, right? And share with us what your concerns are and what your priorities are when we're talking about safety, when we're talking about youth centers. And so I am so grateful for your active participation in this room. It is very important that you continue to guide us in the direction that we need to go to make sure that your futures are successful. I would just like to briefly ask our city manager to also just share a few words if possible.
Thank you very much, Council President. I was gonna essentially say the same thing that, I wanted to, to clarify that the, the city of Chelsea is not making any cuts. In fact, historically, we have done the opposite and we are trying to maximize and leverage what, what funding remains from ARPA, so the, the American Rescue Plan Acts, to really fund workforce development, particularly as it involves our youth. So I, I just wanted to reiterate and clarify that, that as part of this budget, as the city's budget, we have made no cuts on, on, on the amount of money that we have given every year for some of the youth jobs. With that said, and I think as, as one of the speakers said, the, the, the cuts that have been made at the state level are, are, are very alarming and unfortunately, as, as we have found in the past in our history, the Chelsea has to stand on its own, right? The, the cavalry is not coming, right? The, the, we're not gonna be helped by, by members outside of that city, outside of our city. When I heard of the cuts earlier today, we, I had a, a meeting, a, a conference to, to try to brainstorm, you know, and, and see how we can cobble together as much funding as possible to really try to keep this program alive. You know, we are, obviously, we are bound by procurement rules and we are bound by municipal processes, but I make a commitment to the council and I make a commitment to everyone in, in this room that, that we, as myself and in my office, and I know that the council is behind this as well, we are going to explore every possible opportunity and, and every possible pot of money that, that we can in, in order to make sure that this summer, our youth employment program is very active. I wanna say in Spanish, if that's okay with you. Lo que dije en inglés, quiero clarificar, verdad, y que la ciudad de Chelsea en su presupuesto no ha hecho ningún corte, verdad. Los fondos que son dedicados anualmente a los trabajos de verano no se han cortado en la ciudad de Chelsea, verdad. La ciudad sigue comprometido en el proceso y el programa y no hay ninguna intención en cortar esos fondos. Sin embargo, lo que dijimos es que el estado de Massachusetts sí ha estado haciendo muchos cortes al nivel estatal. Y lo que dije en inglés es que lo que hemos aprendido en Chelsea es que Chelsea tiene que pararse solo y usualmente cuando el estado o los federales no nos ayudan, nos ayudamos pronto entre nosotros. Lo que vamos a hacer es que en los próximos días vamos a explorar todas las avenidas y las posibilidades de incrementar estos fondos. Si la ciudad de Chelsea tiene restricciones en términos de los procesos internos, pero vamos a explorar todas esas opciones. Eso es una promesa que le hago yo a todo mundo que está en este cuarto y al consejo también. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, city manager. Igualmente muchas gracias a todas las mamás que están aquí. Yo me acuerdo a los catorce años yo no quería el trabajo, mi mamá fue la que coordinó para yo estar trabajando en el summer youth employment program. And so I just wanna also give a shout out to all the moms that are here today because fourteen, eighteen years ago, when I was fourteen, it wasn't me who wanted the job, it was my mom who coordinated all of that. And so huge shout out to all the moms in the room. Before opening it up to my colleagues for a motion, I would like to ask for the director of the youth department if you could please share with our clerk names and addresses so that we can have it in our notes. We didn't catch all of them. And then if it's possible, also to send any of the testimonies that my colleagues can have also for our record, that would be great. All right, do I have a motion? Sorry, do I have a? Sorry, do I have any speakers? I believe, can we, I'm sorry. Point of clarity from our clerk. Are we able to share any comments? Not during the public speaking, okay. All right, we will move forward. Thank you guys again for your time and for sharing all of your opinions this evening. Moving on now to public speaking.
Hi, I'm Susan Backstrom, 260 Clark Avenue, apartment 807 here in Chelsea. And I'm in solidarity with those who are here or are watching for the sale of 26th County Road. It's a big and rather hard decision to make for our congregation. Please keep us together after the sale, due to many of us being raised there. And yeah, that's a big reason. I'd like us to be able to use our home church as our home church, even as it's part of the school district. And I'd like to say congratulations to the nation of Mexico for electing women leadership. It's ahead of all the rest in the world, or in this continent, anyway, moving ahead with women in leadership. It's just amazing. And then also, I'd like to say hello to Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Brahimi. Glad to know things are being cared for here. And another reason that I wanted to speak is we, as a city, need our disability commission and the ADA to mean something. And I'm here, and I would like you guys to vote me in again. But I'd like us to also keep helping and making more accessible places and activities for our citizens. We can do as much and more, and we can do so much more. And I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and go to work every time that there is an issue. And we also need to create the place for a museum, because 400 years of history is a long time for this continent, anyway. And we should really endeavor to engage that particular group of individuals, the native population and our historical population, and show them. And that's all I have today. I know it's really short, but thank you for your time. And thanks, city council.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Hi again, Lena Zavara, the director of organizing and policy at La Colaborativa. I stand before you today to advocate for your support on the Homes Act, and subsequently, your assistance on strategizing around the fundings that are being cut dramatically in our employment and economic mobility programs. These matters are essential to our community as they directly address the significant impact of the living conditions of our residents, of our residents' ability to secure housing. As such, they warrant immediate attention if we, as a community, are serious about preventing the displacement of our residents. Firstly, I want to address the Homes Act. We have witnessed firsthand the devastating consequences of eviction records, even when cases are dismissed or the tenants prevail. Just this year, we've seen around 120 families that are entering the housing court system, just in Chelsea. These records create significant barriers for individuals and families seeking stable housing, perpetuating a distressing cycle of instability and homelessness. By supporting the Homes Act, Chelsea has the opportunity to lead by example and eliminate these unjust barriers, enabling our residents to rebuild their lives without the burden of past evictions. It is imperative for our city to stand up for the rights of all of our residents and ensure equitable access to housing for everyone, regardless of their past circumstances. Our community is diverse, and it's crucial that we provide support and opportunities for all. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Helena Konikowski. I was born and raised in Chelsea, and I lived at 99 Bellingham Street for 65 years. Well, I'm here today because I was evicted on February 28th. I have a long story to tell, but we would be here till morning, probably. But I will tell you this. My situation, I had to deal with death and serious illness in my family. This is why I got evicted. Everybody has different reasons. Mine were beyond my control. There was nothing I could do to fix it. Well, I'm here today to support Lena and the Colaborativa in ending this awful policy where eviction stays on your record for life. It's so unfair. A lot of us can't control what happened, like mine. I'm not the only one. And for those, maybe the younger generation, maybe if they took a wrong turn in life, eventually, a lot of people straighten out. And when they do, having this roadblock of eviction on your record, it's really gonna, like I said, a roadblock can mess you up. So how are you supposed to straighten out? Please support Lena and the Colaborativa in ending this awful, awful policy. I mean, for life. We're not murderers, we're not drug addicts. Thank you very much.
Good evening, thank you for hanging in there. I know how bad it is to be there. Okay, my name is Jaseni Alfaro, again, from District Eight, school committee board member. I am asking for your support on the just-passed legislation on the Homes Act. It passed the joint committee in favor on March 6th. So now, we need your support. We need you to pass a resolution that can support what Lena was just describing, what this beautiful lady was just saying, the testimonies. We know how bad it is that when you go and try to rent an apartment, especially when 50% of your income in the city of Chelsea is now going towards your rent. So if you can support us by doing a resolution that can be directed to the head of the joint committee, so when the hearing happens, they can see that we, the city of Chelsea, have a full body that is in support of this to be passing. Thank you.
Hi, it's me again, again. Mayra Valderas, from District Four. And I just wanted to share with you that I have a very concerning thing that, for the crossguards. I went to the meeting this morning, and I was talking to different people, and also I have seen it myself, that we need to put slower signs, because on Washington Avenue, people go so fast, and the safety of the students are priority. So I don't know what we can do. We can do bumps on the streets, so they can slower, and Broadway, too. I see those streets are very, very busy streets. And mostly, I don't know if somebody checked those to have the stop signs for students or schools that there are coming students back and forth. But I think it's a concern, especially for the safety of the students, because a lot of cars, they don't want to stop, or sometimes they fighting with their crossing guards. So I'm just concerned, because, you know, we need the safety of our students. And if you can look at it, I will really appreciate, because this is a safety concern. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other speakers, we will move on. Yes.
If I can make a motion to move order number 24 or 27 up. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Councillor Garcia, you have the floor.
Awesome. So, team, good evening. Good evening to those who are here watching us. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long night so far. We have a lengthy agenda, but thank you for your patience. Council members and audience, I am proud to propose this resolution in support of the Homes Act. Many of our families are disproportionately impacted by systemic unjust policies, such as what we're talking about tonight. We need to defend our families. We need to fight for our families. Sealing the eviction records would support our youth that are currently here, that in the future will be adults and that want to purchase a home and that will not be able to, if God forbid, their parents get evicted or their aunts and uncles' guardians get evicted. And so I'll turn it over to our clerk to read the resolution, and I urge our council members to support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Clerk, you may proceed.
Resolution introduced by councillor Kelly Garcia in support of passage of the Homes Act. Whereas over 1 million evictions have been filed in Massachusetts over the past 24 years, and whereas tenants who make up 68% of Chelsea residents and 46% of Massachusetts residents face increasing burdens to securing safe, stable housing accommodations for themselves and their families. And whereas, once an eviction case is filed, it becomes part of that tenant's eviction record, which documents the tenant's history of ever having been sued or have sued by a landlord. And whereas, in 2013, the Massachusetts Trial Court began placing eviction record information online, making a tenant's court record history easily accessible to the public, as well as tenant screening companies. And whereas, regardless of fault, outcome, or underlying basis for a court filing, possessing any record of an eviction filing can present a serious barrier to a tenant's ability to secure housing. And whereas, children and minors named in eviction proceedings bear permanent records that impact their search for housing when they become adults. And whereas, today, tenants who come to an agreement and settle with their landlord correct errors in their record or otherwise need support to alter the publicly available and permanently available record, lack the means to do so. And whereas, many landlords who routinely file a notice to quit, simply as a matter of course at the conclusion of a tenancy, are unaware of the collateral consequences of eviction records or of the growing record of evictions they themselves are accumulating. And whereas, eviction records pose a significant obstacle in securing safe and stable housing, hindering many residents from achieving housing stability and social mobility, as highlighted by the advocacy for automatic settling in cases dismissed, resolved in favor of the tenant, or no-fault evictions. And whereas, legislation introduced in the Massachusetts Legislature by Majority Leader Mike Moran and Senator Lydia Edwards will protect tenants from being unfairly branded with an eviction record by sealing records until a judgment is rendered and ensuring the accuracy of records. And whereas, said legislation does not in any way alter the rights of landlords or property owners and allows all parties to exercise legal rights while moving on with their lives. Now therefore be a result that the Chelsea City Council goes on record in strong support of S. 824 and H. 4356, an act promoting housing opportunity and mobility through automatic eviction sealing, with a specific emphasis on incorporating provisions for automatic sealing in cases that are dismissed, cases resolved in favor of the tenant, and no-fault evictions.
Councillor Garcia, how do you wish to proceed?
Roll call, please.
Councillor, okay. So councillor Jimenez, and then councillor Taylor.
So I just, I'd like to open up by saying that I will be voting in favor of this resolution. I think that we, you know, our current system for evictions, we end up with a system where we're blaming children for problems that they have no control over, right? Some of these records are, you know, we're putting on children who have no ability to, you know, really pay for or, you know, access a contract for rent, right? And we're blaming them for these problems, right? That have nothing to do with them, right? The second piece is that these eviction records, right, you're sometimes getting them regardless of who's at fault, right? So even if it's, you know, you as a tenant are at fault, or if it's your landlord who's at fault. So people are losing access to housing because they're done being discriminated against due to this eviction record, due to bad landlords coming after them, right? So we can't have that. We need to do everything we can to protect the people who are in our city from being pushed out of our city by situations that they had no control over and that where they may not even have done anything wrong. Also, you know, it being so challenging to clear records just shows yet another hurdle that people have to jump through in order to clear their name when they have done nothing wrong. So I just don't believe that we, you know, we don't have a system for renters, just use a bad landlord, right? Why should we have a system that prevents people from clearing their own records when they're being wrongfully accused of something, right? One of these sides has full access to the information from the other side, but we need to make sure that people are able to protect themselves from landlords who are just trying to push them out. So I will be voting in support of this. And thank you so much to the councillor for introducing the resolution.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Taylor.
So once again, this city council cannot do anything about this problem, okay? This city council has no power to do anything. All of this, you should be talking to State Representative Judith Garcia and State Senator Saldi Domenico to get this thing passed, okay? This city council has no power to affect anything. And even if we pass this resolution, which I'm sure we will, it's gonna have zero effect on what happens. So we've spent a lot of time here tonight talking about all this, but you're talking to the wrong people. You've gotta, you've gotta get to the legislature and make them understand that, how you feel, right? So a lot of these things can be debated, and they should be debated. And I welcome that debate. But this is not, a city council meeting is not the proper venue for any of this. Please, go to the legislature and make them understand. We, as citizens, don't do this enough. We go to the wrong people and want things that, like, like with the budget. We didn't have any, we have no power over the state budget. We have zero power over it. You've got to talk to your proper representatives and make sure that you're making your voices heard as is your right, as is your duty. But do it to our state representative and to our state senator. I'm sure they'd love to hear from you. And get them to vote for the Homes Act if you want it. But we've spent a lot of time here today. If you wanna discuss this here locally in Chelsea, there's a housing subcommittee that we'd love to have you. I'm on that committee. Come and talk about it. But this isn't the venue. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I have councillor Tanaydi Garcia, and then councillor Melinda Vega.
I appreciate all the youth that came and spoke, but I strongly disagree with my colleague councillor Taylor. We are here to represent our constituents, our residents, Chelsea, Massachusetts. And we are an advocate. We can speak on our constituents' behalf at state level. Yes, we will be able to speak to our state reps, our senators, our congresswomen. But this is also our job, and it is our duty to listen to our constituents and respectfully go to our state reps and discuss these matters. And these matters do matter here. So we appreciate you coming here, all of you, to be here at 8 o'clock at night and worrying about our children's future, because it is not our children's fault if we, as adults, go through a financial hardship. go through a financial hardship. We shouldn't be punishing our children for something that maybe we don't have control over. So I appreciate everyone coming here and we will advocate at state level and we will go as far as we have to, to continue to advocate for our rights and a better future for us. Thank you.
Counselor Melinda Vega.
I want to echo with a lot of the counselors already stated, I will be supporting this resolution. And like Counselor Tanary Garcia, I echo the notion that as us as city counselors, it is our role and duty to advocate for our constituents and I think it's important that we leverage our roles as city counselors. And I don't think that, I think that just as, you know, when we, when I, when I think of other folks in power, when they leverage their power to bring an important matter up to the front, I think that's exactly what we're doing here. Whether this is something that we vote on and we may not have a direct impact, but I think it speaks volumes when as a whole, we're saying we're going to stand with our community and our constituents because this is something that we believe in and we're going to continue supporting our community members. So thank you, Kelly Garcia, for bringing this up and Tanary for your statements. I, I would be remiss if I don't say thank you for the community for being here. It's 8:31 and you guys, we're not even nowhere, like close ending the agenda, but you guys being here shows that this is an important matter for you guys and this is something that has an impact on each individual's lives here, whether it's something, whether you're a homeowner or not, but if this isn't something that we change, it has direct impacts on our children as well. So this has like a triple effect. And so if this is something that we could stand up and make, you know, a positive change, whether it's just using our leverage as city councils in supporting, in, you know, advocating for this change at a state level, then I think that's what we should do as our role as city counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cooper.
Good evening. Thank you for coming, like all the Counselor says, but you have to understand one thing. We, as Counselor said, we can't do nothing, but you, the people, can. And you can do it without politicians. You could do it through a ballot initiative. You put it on the ballot and they have to listen to what you say. Anything you want to achieve, you vote and you get a ballot initiative and then you leave it up to the voters. And if the voter says that's what they want, that's what the state has to do. It cannot deny what you want to do. So this is good, but it's not good enough. To be good enough, put yourselves in a position to have what I just said and then it will change. That's the only way it will change. If your politicians don't listen to you, it ain't never going to change. So do it through that and then it will change. And it's a good thing. It needs change because some people, they just, they get thrown out, can't pay their rent and this stays on the record and it's bad. I understand that. I'm, that's one of the worst things you can have. Other people, that's a form of discrimination. They discriminate on renting. So the only way to fix it is to pull it to a ballot initiative. Go get your signatures and put it on the ballot. This year is a voting year. You can put it on the ballot and then you let the people vote. That's the way to do it, if you want to do it the right way. And you don't need anybody. You, the people, have the power. So use your power for what you want to use it for.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored and excited to join my colleagues, the speakers of tonight, my school committee members for being here tonight to highlight this issue. I'm just excited that we get an opportunity to do something that we can do. We can stand together tonight. We can make this resolution pass. We can send it to the State House and let those that's already working on it know that we are behind them and we support them. So that's what we can do and that's what I'm willing to do. I want to thank you all for being here tonight and supporting this and I want to let you know, it's really bad and it was just said a minute ago, it's really bad when someone for whatever reason get evicted to, out of a place of living and then they have it on their record and they can't get another place. That's really putting someone not only out but down to stay down. So I want to thank the lady that came up tonight and told us your story. And, you know, it may not even be a fault of yours, but to have that on your record, you're out of the house, but to have it on your record that don't give you an opportunity to go out, someone look at your rec, oh, I'm not going to give this person with two children, a, an apartment because they've been evicted one time or they've been evicted four years ago, 20 years ago, 14 years ago. We need to, to again, stop stuff like this here, you know, again, you know, Chelsea is a unique city. Chelsea is a city where we all stick together, we work together, we learn together, we walk together and we work together. Here's an opportunity for us to work together tonight to send a message, say we stand behind not only our school committee members, but not only our city council, not only our residents, but all those that care about dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, Counselor, Counselor Sandig.
Again, I would be remiss as well to not discuss this issue. I can't imagine being unhoused or evicted or as a young child having this on my record. It's, it's abhorrent and even though I'm here to perhaps just be a conduit, I took an oath to help my constituents and I will stay here all night if I have to, to listen to what you have to say. And I, I will do that. So even though we may not be able to make the decision, we are a bridge to helping you make the decision, to support you, to bring things to our attention so we can bring them to the attention of others who are in a position to make a change. I consider that my job as the District Five City Counselor who swore to do that. I swore to do that, so I will.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, seeing no other speakers, I will proceed with our clerk's roll call.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
No.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tanary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandig.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Cooper.
Absent.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Nine in favor, one opposed, one absent. Resolution is adopted.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk. Moving on. Yes, Counselor Jimenez.
I would like to move out of order to do the budget and the, any amendments if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, we can proceed.
First item on the agenda, order that the following sums as classified and designated with respect to each department are undertaking as salaries, operations and maintenance and capital are hereby appropriated in the general fund of the City of Chelsea as listed below and as summarized. Salaries, $58,439,264. Operations and maintenance, $185,823,453. And capital, $739,420 for a total of $245,2,137.
Okay. Moving on to a roll call vote. Sorry. Repeat that.
Do we have amendments first?
If you have a amendment, you want to re-put a record.
The one you want to vote on?
Huh?
The one you want to vote on first?
Yeah, the one we're going to vote on.
We have an amendment proposed by Counselor Robinson amended, that the regular salary appropriation for the Department of Housing and Community Development be decreased in the amount of $27,221 to new total $595,538.
I, I'd ask for this reduction because I'm concerned about some of our spending in regards to ARPA. And we need to start thinking about a plan when the ARPA money disappears, how are we going to be able to sustain those people who are presently being employed by the City of Chelsea under ARPA funds? That's the reason why I offered this amendment. I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Can you, can you clarify what the amendment says?
Point of clarity requested by Counselor Teshi.
The amendment will read that the regular salary appropriation for Department of Housing and Community Development is decreased from its current amount by $27,221 to a new total of $595,538.
Decrease? Decrease, that is correct. The Counselor is requesting that we decrease funds in the Department of Housing and Community Development for the salaries. Counselor Jimenez, Counselor Brown.
So I, I just want to, I guess the, the Counselor is stating that this is around to make sure that we're using the ARPA funding adequately. I, I guess where I would go with this is I think as long as there is, there are conversations in the future to see what we are going to be doing with these rolls once the ARPA funding is no longer, no longer there, I think it's fine to continue with these rolls until, at which point we, we need to have that conversation, but we have those funds right now and we have a need in our Housing and Community Development Department, so I don't see a need to, to support this, this reduction and would welcome further conversation with the, with the city about what we're going to do with these, with these positions once we no longer have the funding. So I will be voting against these, this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be voting against it also. I think, you know, we had budget hearings and every night we came out, they were long nights, we got a lot of details. We talked to the city manager, his vision, his strategy. It seems though, you know, with the nine jobs and the responsibility for the raises, contractual, it was a straightforward budget. I know that, you know, I work hard. I work hard to make sure that the funding, the finance of our city government is right and done in the right order and operational. But I know from watching the city manager, he works hard. He really cares about what he was doing and what his thoughts was with his team. It was a lot of logic in what he was trying to do. The reason why I'll be voting for it is because I don't know what this $27,000 plus dollars does. I know we have priorities. We were talking about trying to make sure that we, when we hire folks, they're able to sustain it and live in our city and be able to be a part and fabric of our city. And I think that was the spirit that the city manager was doing in his budget. The increases was allowing folks to be able to be competitive with other communities, to stay here, keep them here, that they can afford to live here. And again, without knowing much other than what we're reading tonight and over the weekend regarding this here, I'm just not sure where it's coming. It's really, I mean, I very quickly done, it's probably that much of the budget, $27,000 we got, come on now. I mean, I, it would have been more interesting for me to be trying to cut, you know, four or five jobs where with $200,000, $300,000, but I would not have done that. I would have gave it some consideration and thought, why are we doing it? But this year, $27,000 and the fact that I'm not sure what's happening, I know it's ARPA money, it's money that we have, it's money that I know that we're going to try to strengthen our, our city and our residents. There's so many more folks in our community and in our workplace here that could benefit by some of the ARPA money, so this may be something that we need to also look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to provide some time for our city manager to also speak.
Thank you, Council President and thank you, Counselors. I 100% hear you loud and clear on the, the cliff that is coming before us, right? So we, we know that, that ARPA funds are going to expire and we know that any commitments that we make with ARPA funds, many of them will not be sustainable once ARPA leaves. And we know that, that's something that I've, I've talked to a lot of the counselors about. However, we, we, it's hard to, you know, keep providing the services that our residents want and our businesses want by cutting these, these things now. So what, what, what I shared with the city council in, in our, in our hearing process is that our strategy is going to be to essentially leave as many of these jobs unfilled. So every time that, that a job that is funded out of ARPA is, is vacated, whether an employee leaves or, or through attrition, right, is, is the proper word, we, we simply will not backfill the position. So that, that has happened already with two of those positions. We had an employee that unfortunately, due to personal circumstances, has, has indicated that, that they will no longer be employed in, in the city, we will be doing the same thing with that. So we, we are going to be taking a hard look at every possible job, knowing that, that when, when we come before you in FY '27, we will absolutely be mindful of every position that we are asking you to carry in the operating budget. The, at the same time, we do have ARPA funds that we need to expend, right? So it, it is a tough balance between, you know, making the cuts now or, or having a plan to, as, as we strategize, as we get closer to that cliff. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
So I, I understand Counselor Robinson's amendment and I, I have the same concerns. However, I think the, like was said, if we don't spend the ARPA funds, they go away. So that being said, I would also say that if these positions are, are funded by ARPA and ARPA is going away, when it comes time next year to vote on these positions, I, I will probably vote no, seeing that we've already increased salary positions in this budget by 6% and over the last three years, the budget has gone up significantly. And this all happening in a time, as we've all heard for the last almost two hours, the state budget is going to get tighter and tighter and tighter as the economy slows and slows and the, and the revenue dries up. So I would say that I'll probably vote against this amendment only because I think we need to use the funds that we were given and after that, we can make another decision next year. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Robinson.
For the record, it doesn't eliminate anybody's job. And the fact of the matter is if we recruit some of this money, we might be able to use it somewhere else, like all these young people who came up here tonight to speak as an option, whether we can use the funds in that manner. That's why I submitted it.
Okay. All right, moving on to roll call vote.
A roll call vote on the amendment. Be advised, should the amendment pass, I request the council take a five-minute recess so the auditing team can prepare a revised budget vote. Yes, vote to adopt on the amendment. Counselor Tejera.
No.
Counselor Taylor.
No.
Counselor Vega.
No.
Counselor Tanary Garcia.
No.
Counselor Sandig.
No.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
No.
Counselor DeJesus.
No.
Counselor Brown.
No.
Counselor Cooper.
Absent.
Counselor Kelly Garcia, also absent, and Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
We have one in favor, nine opposed. The amendment is rejected. We move on to the original order as written unless there are any other amendments.
Counselor Teshi.
I submitted an amendment to the budget. If the council clerk has it, would you mind reading it?
I can't hear it. I'm sorry.
There was a proposed amendment introduced by Counselor Tejera, order that regular salary appropriation for the Department of Health and Human Services be decreased in the amount of $55,697 to a new total $203,233.
Can I speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
The reason why I proposed this amendment is targeting specifically the position Administrative Assistant to the Health and Human Services Director. My reasoning for this, we're just concerned, you know, the day of the hearings when the department came forth and we asked what is, you know, just for, you know, information, this position is not filled yet, so there's not, you know, a person handling this responsibility as of now. But when I asked, you know, what is the purpose of this position, there was no plan put forth yet. forth yet, and so I communicated with the city manager, and I asked if the council can be provided with a plan before taking forth any action towards approving this, this part of the budget. So with that being said, I'd like to move to waive council rules and allow for the city manager to come up and speak.
Yes, absolutely. City manager, if you can please join us on the podium.
Point of clarification.
Yes. Point of clarification, Council Jimenez.
So my understanding is that the council can only vote to decrease line item amounts, we cannot vote to decrease specific positions, is that correct?
That's correct. So the vote hypothetically, if you were moving it to a roll call vote, would be for the amount for the position, but the city manager and the department would be free to move the money around in that department in the manner they choose to accommodate, if they choose. So you're voting for the amount for the position, but not technically for the position itself.
Thank you.
City manager? Or Council Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'll be voting against this amendment. You know, again, I, I got some notes that was, I put together over the weekend, I was reading all this package work, and it says, while it is also our goal to enhance and the commitment to providing service in mental and behavioral service, environmental justice, health and food securities. I mean, that follows right under Department of Health and Human, Health and Human Services. And again, we are still in a need for these services that we've been talking about. We're talking about mental illness, we're talking about health, and these are the dollars that the departments put in their budget to go out and do the job that we ask them to do. So I'm going to be standing on my feet, and I'm going to be voting no against this amendment again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Jimenez was not done with his question. Do you want to finish your question, or?
I just, I wanted to, I just had a point of clarification about the process. I will probably have a comment, but I would like the city managers to speak first.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you so much, Council President and Council. The, Councilor Teshi was gracious enough to reach out to me last week, and we had a conversation on, on, on this department and, and the overall salary structure of this department. I sent a, an email to the council explaining essentially the history of, of that position and, and the costs that are associated with it. Essentially, as you all know, Council, the, over the last two years, we have had a, a hard time filling all of our vacant jobs, and in that department in particular, there were two jobs that were vacant for, for a significant amount of time. One was the HHS director role that, that had been vacant since twenty-twenty-one, I believe, or, or something along those lines. It, it has been funded every year in, in the budget, but just in terms of priorities, essentially, it, our team was overwhelmed, essentially, with, with backfilling that role. We have since backfilled it with, with Ned Keeffe. You know, I shared with the council that while I am, I am very thankful of the fact that Mr. Keeffe has remained on, he, he has, has notified us that, that he, he intends to retire, you know, at some point soon. He's been, he's been with the city for over thirty years at this point. What essentially happens is, is that because the, the director role was just filled recently, it is time for us to backfill the, the Administrative Assistant role. And that title can be a little misleading. What that person does essentially is provide administrative support for all of the departments that fall under the HHS umbrella, which is the library, the senior center, public health, veteran services, and recreation. So what, what has been happening is that Mr. Keeffe has had a lot of balls in the air and has had to do all these duties. The Veteran Service Event, for instance, has a lot of administrative tasks that, that are done and performed on a regular basis. This position was previously occupied by Margarita Franco, who, who, who was a, a big person in our community. She retired after COVID and moved to Honduras, but I can assure to the council that it is a position that we need, it is a position that, that historically provided a lot of support for our community, and, and we will absolutely shift on, on filling that role as soon as possible.
Thank you, city manager. Okay. Council Jimenez.
So I, I just want to kind of explain my thought on this a little bit. I, I don't see what the city manager said as not knowing what this person is going to be doing. I also see it as this department potentially evolving as the five departments under it continue to evolve, and as we get a new HHS director stepping into that role after Ned retires. This position is going to, you know, I think, allow for supporting continuity and supporting the five departments now, also as a new leader for the, for the, for the department comes in and into the future. I think that it's, it should be important for us to continue to have conversations about this department, how it's doing, its supports for, for the five departments, what supports they may need, and I think next year, it would be a worthwhile conversation, absolutely. But as of right now, I, I think that they need that capacity to be able to continue to provide the support, so I will be, I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
All right, Council Teshi.
So the reason why I put that amendment forth is so that I could ask the city manager to come forth this evening and to present answers that, you know, were not answered at the time we, we asked during the hearing. But given the, the information the council has been given, I feel a lot more confident in terms of supporting a budget with this position, so I will be withdrawing my amendment.
Thank you, Councilor.
You want to read? We had one final amendment introduced by Council Robinson, ordered that the, amended that the city manager's salary line item be decreased in the amount of one-hundred-thousand dollars.
And at this time, I ask to withdraw that amendment.
Withdrawn. Amendment withdrawn. No further amendments.
Okay. Let's, let's move on to a roll call vote.
A roll.
Budgets. All right.
Any speaker?
Any speakers? No speakers. Council Brown.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, again, I know it's been a long night, but bear with us here. This year came many plans, many changes, we had a new city manager, a new executive team, so we got a lot of work to do, we had a lot of ideas, new city council members. I think this is our first budget together, I think we did a great job, worked together, listened to a lot of quick fix ideas. Obviously, it's not the, you know, perfect budget, but it's a good budget, it's a sound budget, it's a budget that's fair, it's a budget that I believe that engaged in our responsibility to support the thoughts and our sort of concerns that we had as city council members. So I'm glad that we were able to get all of us as city council members through all the budget hearings. I want to thank each and every department for coming out, giving us an overview of their department, their desires, how to enhance, strengthen those departments. And when you enhance your department and strengthen your department, you help us as the city councilors, because we're out there telling our residents about the services and resources available here in the city of Chelsea. So I'm glad to know that we also are able to sustain what we're voting on here tonight, you know. The bottom line, I guess it was like less than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we'd have to bring to support the budget. The budget went up out of that. So special shout out to Mr. Dunn for the work, your staff. You know, a lot of department heads was here throughout the budget processes, but you and your staff members were here every night, so thank you for bringing all the dedication and the work that you bring in our city to help us make it more clear about each department, what dollars are going, whether they're salaries or expenses or computers or whatever supplies. It was very thought out, it was very easy and manageable to read. I thought it was a fair budget from our city manager, who, again, you know, I've watched him, I don't know how many you guys and ladies are watching this guy, but this guy, this guy's working. This guy, I know at the, the beginning of the, the process, everyone was wondering, does he have the experience, does he want to do it, that he cares, he really cares about Chelsea, he really cares about the folks here in City Hall. I, I truly understand what he's doing, so, you know, I want to say thank you, Mr. City Manager, for your dedication and your work, and trying to bring everything that we want to see here in our city. Again, we talked about the youth program, the youth were up here tonight regarding the cuts at the State House, but again, we've already made a commitment to stay with them, so we want them to know that we're staying with them. We realize that still, you know, you go down on Sixth Street, you go down on the Salvation Army, on Chestnut, you go down on Broadway and Third Street, you still see a line of folks out there. So the food, security, we're still supporting that, so, you know, I can go on and on, but I want to be able to tell you that I'm going to support this budget. I hope my colleagues, and I'm sure we all will, because it's been thought out and it's been really read, I think we all have done our homework. And other than, you know, the jobs, the contractual stuff, it's really haven't been a lot of good increases in there. You know, we looked at folks that we wanted to keep in the job. We talked even about our guy here, Cliff, we talked about him. He's done an excellent, outstanding job, and he, you know, we, we want to make sure the next folks come on, whether the department they go in, they follow that mold that him and other Chelsea residents are doing. So thank you for a great budget, I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Seeing no other speakers, Council Taylor.
I just want to say that I will be voting for the budget. And just to address the people out there with the concerns about how much we're actually spending and the increases that, that we're going to vote on here in just a minute. I know that it's really important, at the municipal level, we have a job to do for the people. This is the basic level of government. This is where money really should be spent, is the closest to the people, right? I have no problem in doing that, because we, we're providing kind of basic things to the public. Now, sometimes, I know in the past, we've had a real customer service problem here in Chelsea. If anybody has, has, you know, gone to the clerk's office or, or to, not that these people aren't working hard, it's just that a lot of times, we don't have enough people to actually physically handle the demand of what's going on. And, and I think that we invested time and money into a new city manager that, that deserves an opportunity to do things his way, and then we will judge if those things are actually prosperous, if they work or if they don't work. But he deserves that opportunity, I think, I think that, that I understand what he's trying to do. I hope that we gain a lot more efficiency out of, out of city government and getting it to actually be more effective in what it tries to do by, by investing the money in the new position so that we can actually do the job for the people better. That being said, we'll see next year when, when things come out, how we're doing, and, you know, I think we'll have a lot of choices coming up with a whole variety of issues. And I would just warn people too, that money doesn't grow on trees, even though the government likes to print more and more and more, that's what causes our inflation, the worst we've seen since the nineteen-seventies. Another reason why we have to raise salaries, because inflation eats everything up. So please be aware that the government's going to have less money, the state government's going to have less money to give to us and to everyone else. So we need to tighten our belts a little bit and try to, try to do with, with what we have. Thank you very much, I will be voting in favor.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Jimenez, and then Council Robinson.
So I just want to, the first thing I want to do is thank the youth who came to speak. It's not easy to see people in positions of power take away your resources, even when it's not the people that you're speaking to, right? As you've heard a number of times, we're not the ones that are cutting your funding. It still doesn't feel good, and I just want to acknowledge that. We're not able to help you by voting for, for the money that you want, but what I can say is that we, I, I'm committing myself at least, and hoping that my colleagues will join me in pushing for additional funding, whether it can be found in the city, whether it is advocating at the State House. So I just want to, and that, to me, is the latest example of the state shortchanging our community. This is a good budget, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize that, but I do think that the state is shortchanging us, right? Whether it's the Chapter Ninety funding that comes from the state to support the, the work that we do here in City Hall, whether it's the Chapter Seventy funding that goes directly to our schools, that's seven million dollars that they're shortchanging us, because even though they have ways to have additional resources to provide to us, they choose not to, right? Just six months ago, they gave a huge tax break to people in the highest income brackets, right? Those are resources that could have come to a place like Chelsea. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not just talking about, oh, the city and, and, you know, the, the state and they're printing money and all that, right? The fiscal state of Massachusetts is really good, we're doing really well. What's happening is that we, as a Commonwealth and people outside of Chelsea, are using their political power to give resources to the people that don't need it. The people who need it are here, we need to make sure that we are advocating to our state legislators and make sure that we are coming together with people from across our state to fight for the resources that we need, because at the end of the day, we can raise taxes all we want, we, we don't have the resources here in Chelsea to do what we need here in Chelsea. So I want to make sure that we are continuing, not just, we're going to support this budget, I'm going to, but we need to fill the holes that are still in our budget, because we don't have the resources here, and we need to make sure that we're getting them from the people who actually are, are able to support us in a way that we can, because they have access to greater resources, and that's the people at the state legislature and at the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Council Robinson, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I will be supporting this budget, but I also want to say we did have a six percent increase. We need to be paying attention to how we're spending the money. City manager and I have had some conversations going back and forth, and within six months, we're going to do a review of all the spending that we're doing, and whether or not we're meeting the goals of all the things that we said we're going to do in this budget. So I will be supporting the budget.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Cooper.
I'll support the budget too. The only thing I got to say is one thing, don't kill the poor people that are here, they can't afford you. So the bigger the budget you get, the less people that can't afford it will have to leave this city, because that's how it works. When you make big government or bigger spending, who pays for it? The tenants? And big corporations don't care, they have the money. It's the poor little people that live here. So the more you spend and the more you want to make more things for more people, what you're actually doing is you're getting rid of the poor people that can't afford to live here. So you got to make sure that you take care of the little people that are here, that live here. Don't outprice them, don't get them out, they're always talking about gentrification. What is the fastest way to gentrify? Increase your budget, you can't afford the rent, and you'll have to go.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Kelly Garcia, and then Council Teshi.
Team, good evening. I, it is nine o'clock, we have seven pages left of this agenda to get through. I respectfully ask, if we're supporting this budget, let's vote, let's get to work. Our people need to sleep, our youth need to sleep, we need to get to work tomorrow, and so if I ask, if your question is not super urgent, just save it, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Teshi.
What my colleague said.
Awesome. All right, let's get to voting.
Yes, yes, vote to adopt. Council Teshi.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Vega. Council Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Council Santiget.
Yes.
Council Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Council De Jesus.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Cooper.
Yes.
Council Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Council Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, FY twenty-five budget general fund is adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda.
The next item pulled out of order by Council Jimenez Rivera was Order Concerning Appropriations for Fiscal Year Beginning in July 1st, 2024 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Order that the following sums designated as appropriations are hereby appropriated in the Sewer Enterprise Fund of the City of Chelsea as follows. Salary appropriations, seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-four. Operations. Order that the following sums designated as appropriations are hereby appropriated in the Sewer Enterprise Fund of the City of Chelsea as follows. Salary appropriations, seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and four. Operations and maintenance expense, eleven million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-one. And capital appropriations, two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, forty-three, for a total of fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Do I hear a motion on the floor?
We're lost here.
We're on enterprise.
Counsel, Counselor Jimenez Rivera moved the budget out of order. The other amendment, the other orders that are before you are part of the budget, it's not just the general fund. You have Sewer Enterprise, Water Enterprise, and Free Cash.
Can I make a motion, uh, adopt on the roll call vote?
Okay. We are still trying to locate the, where we are exactly on the line item of the budget, so let's do that.
Twenty-four F fifty-six.
Okay.
Twenty-four F fifty-six. Second readings, Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Yes. Uh, Counselor Teshi, can you please open the door? Okay, now, Counselor Brown, you, uh, had the floor.
Making, uh, motion to under roll call adoption. Vote for it.
Okay.
No speaking for me.
Okay. Motion to roll call.
Vote.
Vote. The adoption.
You don't have to, just roll call vote.
Okay. No objections?
Speakers?
All right. Any speakers? All right, no.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Cooper.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, the fiscal year twenty-five Sewer Enterprise Fund is adopted.
Moving on.
Twenty-four F fifty-seven Water Enterprise Fund, fiscal year twenty-five. Order that the following sums designated as appropriations are hereby appropriated in the Water Enterprise Fund of the City of Chelsea as follows. Salary, seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and four. Operations and maintenance expense, seven million, six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty. And capital appropriations, two million, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, for a total of ten million, four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six.
Motion to adopt, uh, by roll call vote.
Seeing no objections, moving on with the motion. Any speakers? No speakers.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Cooper.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed, fiscal year twenty-five Water Enterprise Fund is adopted.
Moving on.
Twenty-four F fifty-eight Fiscal Year Twenty-five Free Cash Appropriation. Order that the city appropriations and assessments in the general fund are to be financed in part by certified free cash of the City of Chelsea as follows. Free cash in the amount of seven hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Roll call vote on the adoption.
All right, seeing no objections. Any speakers? None?
Just quickly, man.
Oh, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, very quickly. Just want the public to notice, seven hundred and six thou, seven oh six is what we need to sustain, um, to make the budget complete, so that's what we'll be voting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, moving on.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Cooper.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven in favor, zero opposed, fiscal year twenty-five Free Cash Appropriation is adopted. That concludes the FY twenty-five budget orders.
Amazing. Okay, now, we are returning back to our original order on the agenda.
So what number is that?
Next item on the agenda, under regular order, is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the City Council dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Counselor Garcia makes a motion to accept minutes, seeing no objections, moving on.
Next, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I make a motion?
Counselor Garcia makes a motion.
To accept.
To accept the minutes. Seeing no objections, we are moving on to communications from the city manager.
We have a copy of a communication received from the city manager regarding responding to City Council Order twenty-four one oh five, explore funding for a municipal athletic director. Dear councilors, I am writing a response to Council Order twenty-four one oh five, requesting that the city manager explore the hiring of a municipal athletic director. Our deputy city manager of operations and HSS director have explored this matter, have met with several councilors.
Move, Counselor Jimenez?
Move to waive the rest of the reading, um, under suspension if there are no objections, and, uh, accept and file under communications.
Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend it to, uh, move it to the Special Committee on Youth Sports.
Yes, okay. Seeing no objections, moving the order to a special committee.
How special is this committee?
On sports. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is, um, something that, um, with the ARPA money, we've been talking about. This is another piece of legislation that the city's looking at, support the youth, um, and where we're going to use some money, and we're talking about, if someone can actually galvanize everything together. So, want the folks who was here tonight, those who's viewing at home, we are working on it, so we're hoping to have something done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
So I'll just briefly say that I look forward to, I, I want to thank the city manager and, um, our City Hall staff for putting, um, for doing some of the, the research. I look forward to dealing with this in our Special Committee on, on youth sports, and hopefully we can, uh, uh, come up with a good plan that's really going to help our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, moving on.
Communication received from the city manager responding to City Council Order twenty-four one twenty-seven, FY twenty twenty-four use of free cash. Dear councilors, I am writing a response to Council Order twenty-four one oh twenty-seven, requesting an accounting of.
Counselor Teshi.
Move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file communications from the city manager.
All right, seeing no objections. Moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager responding to Council Order twenty-four one twenty-eight, Citywide Operational Overview. Dear councilors, I am writing a response to Council Order twenty-four one twenty-eight.
The communication may be something coming up under new business.
Counselor Cooper. Just accept and file is, is good. Okay, seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, Kelly Chambly of Chelsea, Cristo Correio Gomboa of Chelsea, Alexis Turgeon of Chelsea, Garrett DeYoung of Chelsea, Terry Widener of Chelsea, for two-year terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, Deputy City Manager of Operations Devon Field to take the place of former Deputy City Manager Ned Keef. Reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Bianca Servalyn of Chelsea, Lauren Sokel of Chelsea, Endeavor's Dabid of Chelsea. Reappointment to the Zoning Board, Ms. Joan Cromwell of Chelsea. Reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Olivia Anne Walsh of Chelsea. And appointment to the Board of Health, Jessica Wins of Chelsea. Appointment to the Board of Registarrists, Cheryl Sullivan of Chelsea. Reappointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Thomas Curtin of Chelsea. Appointment to the Planning Board, Regina Taylor of Chelsea. And appointment to the Council of Elder Affairs, Marcus Queen of Chelsea.
Counselor Taylor, do you have an amendment on the floor?
Uh, is there one this one?
Yes.
I'll make it. That's fine.
Yeah, move to a second reading.
I'll take care of it, it's fine.
You'll take care of it.
I'll read it.
Okay.
Prior, after our office received the communication, we received notification from a staff member who coordinates with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, that member Colleen Kelly, who is on your communication this evening, has been reappointed, has withdrawn her request, and intends to step down from her position after her term expires. So the communication before you will be amended to remove her name from it, and the city manager will submit a new appointee at the future date.
Uh, could you repeat the name?
Uh, Colleen Kelly, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board.
Yes, she's from Men.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. Uh, moving on.
Move to a second reading.
Moving, moving to a second reading, and moving on to the next item.
We have a communication received from the city manager requesting city council approval for acquiring twenty-six County Road. Dear councilors, I am writing to inform you of significant progress regarding the city's initiatives and to request your approval for the acquisition of the property located at twenty-six County Road. The city council must approve any property acquisition. Your approval is crucial for advancing this project, which will greatly benefit our community by supporting education, literacy, and workforce development. We are not requesting the use of any city funds to make this purchase. This acquisition will be paid for with ARPA funds previously approved by the city council through our FY twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan. To date, we have made substantial progress towards finalizing this acquisition. Both the city and the current owner have conducted independent appraisals.
Can we waive the reading and take a roll call vote?
Counselor Cooper is waiving the reading, roll call vote, are there any?
Something coming up under new business.
There is something coming up under new business.
All right, we'll move it to new business.
Okay. Seeing no objections?
We can take it out of the business.
Okay, well, so can we take it out and vote on it now?
Is that what you're requesting, Counselor?
Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, no objections?
Um, Madam President, I would, I would object, let's just go through the agenda so that we don't have to mix the papers.
Could you use the mic so we can all hear you?
Yes, I would just say, uh, let's just go through the agenda and the order as laid out, um, and, uh, you know, things will come as, as, you know, there's not necessary to jump ahead. And we don't have to flip the papers.
All right. Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
We have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval for departments to pay prior year expenses. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval for the Department of Information Technology to make a payment of a prior year expense from their respective FY twenty-
Madam President?
Counselor Teshi?
Move to waive the rest of the reading, there will be something coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager regarding a quest for approval of easement three sixty-one Broadway. Dear councilors, I am writing to request the city council's approval of an easement agreement for the housing project at three sixty-one Broadway. The easement agreement will authorize the construction of foundation footings within the sidewalk right of way on Division Street and Fourth Street. The easement area is made up of eight non-contiguous parcels totaling one hundred and fifty-seven square feet. The market value of the permanent easement parcels as of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four is zero dollars. ARX BC LLC will be constructing in addition to and renovating the existing mixed-use commercial residential building at three sixty-one Broadway. Title to the property is currently held by an affiliate of the ARX BC AU Broadway LLC. The project will accommodate sixty-two residential units. It received unanimous approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals in zoning case number two thousand twenty-two dash zero two. The project has four distinct facets. Renovation of the building fronting on Broadway, modernization of the existing nineteenth upper floor.
Madam President, yeah.
Counsel.
Like, wait, wave the rest of the reading.
Counselor Jimenez.
I, motion to waive the rest of the reading, if there are no objections, and just clarification, are, is, is something coming up later, or, okay, something will be coming up later, so, accept and file under communication, um, waive the rest of the reading, if there are no objections.
Three sixty-one.
Seeing no objections. All right, moving on.
We have a communication received from the city manager regarding year-end financial requests. Dear councilors, I am writing to request some final votes to address some end-of-year financial matters, including the need for some supplemental appropriations to cover deficits. The details are as follows. CPD body cameras off.
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading, I believe this is, uh, also going to be showing up, uh, later down the agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no objections, waiving the rest of the reading. Thank you.
We move on to communications and petitions.
If I could just act through the chair, um, we had two of the three, um, sixty-one Broadway, uh, we had one with a date on it, May twenty-eighth, and one with a date of May twenty-ninth. I was just wondering which one we accepted.
I'm sorry.
That was the Broadway. I think that was Broadway. Did we read both of them?
No. You read the communication from the city manager, the communication from the Director of Housing and Community Development is coming up under communications and petitions to the council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, moving on.
Our first communication is received from Michelle Marzus, Chair of the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee, requesting city council appropriate sixty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act budgetary reserve for a housing and community preservation manager. Dear councilors, the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee is pleased to send to the city council one recommendation for grant funding from the Community Preservation Fund. At the twenty sixteen general election, sixty-six point five percent of Chelsea residents voted to adopt the Community Preservation Act and oppose a one point five percent surcharge in residential and commercial properties, with exemptions for low and moderate income households, as well as an exemption on the first one hundred thousand dollars of property value. On December nineteenth, twenty sixteen, Chelsea City Council voted to adopt an ordinance for the Community Preservation Committee to make recommendations on expenditures authorized by the Community Preservation Act. The recommendations of the committee are sent to the city council with the amount-
Madam President, I'd move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file the communication.
Seeing no objections, waiving the rest of the reading.
We have a communication received from school committee member Sarah Neville regarding approval of purchase and renovation of twenty-six County Road for use by the Chelsea Opportunity Academy in intergenerational literacy program.
Can we do that on a roll call vote?
You don't have to, just, just.
Accept and file.
No, this, this is just an acceptance.
Just accept and file, communication under suspension.
Counselor Kelly Garcia, accept and file.
Counselor Kelly Garcia, accept and file.
We have a communication received from Director of Housing and Community Development, Ben Kears, regarding an easement agreement for the project at three sixty-one Broadway.
There we go.
To the honorable members of the city council, ARX BC LLC will be constructing in addition to and renovating the existing mixed-use commercial residential building at three sixty-one Broadway. Title to the pro-
Can we waive the rest of the reading?
Counselor Cooper, would like to waive the rest of the reading.
No objections.
Seeing no objections. All right, moving on.
Something coming up under new business. We have a communication received from the planning board regarding approval from the planning board of Section thirty-four dash one fifty-eight C two marijuana facility hours of operation. Dear Councilor De Jesus, at a duly posted-
Oh, just, yeah, just accept and file under communication, uh, and waive the rest of the reading, if there are no objections.
Okay, thank you, moving on.
Communication received from the planning board regarding proposed zoning amendment body art, Section thirty-four dash two forty-one, definitions in Section thirty-four dash three hundred table of principal uses.
Madam President, uh, move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving on.
We have a communication received from Counselor Kelly Garcia regarding a report received from Chelsea's representative on the Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School Committee.
Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Hey, team, I'll be quick. Northeast graduation is June sixth at six P M.
Counselor, can you accept and file first?
Oh, sorry, I accept and file, and we'd like to speak on it if there are no objections.
You have the floor.
Great, thanks. Uh, team, graduation for Northeast is on June seventh at six P M. We have about forty-six Chelsea students graduating, and so if you'd like to attend the ceremony, we are all invited. Please respond to Blanca's email to confirm whether you will be attending or not. Secondly, um, we are planning a Chelsea Day at Northeast sometime in the fall, so stay tuned for more details. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on now.
We move on to committee reports. We have a committee report received from Council President De Jesus regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference held May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file, communication, suspension.
Madam President, uh, can we combine the budget items into one?
Uh, Counselor Jimenez would like to amend the motion to combine.
Just, just move, just to move to, uh, items twenty-four CR nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
We are combining the, uh, items up until, uh, twenty-four CR twenty-one, twenty-four CR twenty-two has to remain separate.
Okay, great, so.
We're skipping the meeting.
These are committee reports for the meetings that were televised for our budget. And so we are combining them all together.
To accept and file.
Accept and file.
All the committee reports.
Yeah, okay, everything except for that last one, that is twenty-four CR twenty-two.
So nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Mm-hmm, okay. Seeing no objection? All right, accept and file.
Move on, we have a committee report received from Counselor Taylor regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means held May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, Counselor Taylor. Alright, Counselor Taylor?
So, just to be, just to be brief, because we've, we've all been here a long time. Most of the things that were, were, were in here, uh, for the ways and means were pain of old bills that were somehow overlooked, or there was some problem with them, um, so, uh, that's just pretty much, um, pretty much it. Nothing really, uh, substantial, uh, in here, uh, but, uh, you know, just, just basically paying old bills.
Yes, uh, counselor, accepting and filing?
Yeah, we'll accept and file.
Awesome, moving on to unfinished business, there is none, second readings.
Can we waive the reading and take a roll call vote for the second readings?
We have many roll call votes for the-
Read the vote and then roll call vote. Read the order, you know, just-
Okay, so let's start off with the first item under second reading.
First matter under second reading is we have a communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments and reappointments to board and commissions. Members of his follows. Community Recreation Advisory Board, Mohammed Qasim of Chelsea.
Madam President, motion to, uh, waive the reading and adopt under roll call vote. There are no, uh, under suspension if there are no objections?
Just read the names.
Any objections, seeing that?
Read the names.
Uh, read the names, okay, so we are reading the names.
Community Recreation Advisory Board, Mohammed Qasim of Chelsea. Board of Assessors, Mr. John Tagliatella of Chelsea. Appointment to the Tree Board, Diane Paxton of Chelsea. Appointment to the Disability Commission, Susan Backstrom of Chelsea.
Alright.
Roll call vote requested.
Counselor Brown?
Just very quickly, I just wanna thank the citizens for volunteering to do these jobs, as we know, these jobs are unpaid jobs, but, you know, again, we need our citizens to play a hand in helping our ci- um, city, and so I wanna just say thank you. Again, uh, they're non-paying jobs, and we thank you for your service and your dedication to be able to help.
Thank you, counselor. Alright, proceeding with our roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia. Absent, Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, appointments are approved.
Moving on.
Next, under second readings, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby cost incurred in FY twenty-three were not paid and are owed to the vendor-
Make the waive the rest of the reading, please, and, um, move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections?
Yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent, Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order is adopted.
Moving on.
Following orders were taken out of order, we move on to twenty-four F fifty-nine. An order introduced by Counselor Taylor, read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, F three dash four, Chelsea City Council hereby approves the FY twenty-five P E G access budget as follows. Chelsea Cable Television, two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Chelsea Public Schools, eighty-five thousand. City of Chelsea, one hundred and thirty thousand.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Move to a roll call vote.
Okay, seeing no objections? Moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Robert- Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted.
Awesome, thank you clerk, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the FY twenty-five Community Preservation Budget in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter forty-four B, Section six. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council reserve for appropriation the following amounts from estimated FY twenty twenty-five receipts as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. One hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-seven dollars, ten percent of estimated revenue for acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. One hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-seven dollars, ten percent of estimated revenue for acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources.
Like to waive the rest of the reading and move to roll call vote, please.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent, Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted.
Thank you clerk, moving on.
The following, the remaining matters under second readings were all taken out of order, we move on to new business. First matter under new business, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the rewarding of grant funding to this FY twenty-
Madam President?
Counselor Taylor?
Can we, can we group some of these together and move, move them all to a second reading?
Yes.
We can root, if we can just read the, the basic thing and then, and then, uh, group them all together and move to a second reading.
Uh, seeing no objections, alright, let's group.
Sorry, move, move to the, uh, Ways and Means Committee.
And, okay, we are sending these to Ways and Means?
Which item?
Every item on new business up to item number twenty-four F eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Do you want the titles read or just moved?
Um, eighty-seven, eighty-seven, I think that-
That's double A.
Do you want the titles read or all just moved? Hmm?
Do you want the titles to be read as well, or just?
No, just order numbers.
Just moved.
Eighty-seven?
Just moved.
And that is inclusive of eighty-seven?
And that is inclusive of eighty-seven.
They were all moved to Ways and Means and to a second reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, we move on to an order introduced by Council President De Jesus. Whereas the administration of the City of Chelsea and the administration of Chelsea Public Schools have determined that there is a need for more space to continue Chelsea's education programming, and whereas a procurement process was performed-
I move to waive the rest of the reading and move for a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
Move to waive the rest of the reading and, um, ask for a roll call vote.
Seeing no objections? Moving on. Yes, uh, Counselor Jimenez, you have the floor.
So I just wanna, um, really, just really quickly, 'cause I know that we're running very late now, um, this, uh, the intergenerational literacy program and the Chelsea Opportunity Academy are two, uh, programs that we have in Chelsea Public Schools that have been looking for a home for years. Since I started on the school committee four years ago, we have been trying to find a place. This is a very exciting opportunity where we get to not only find a stable home for this, um, for, for these two programs, but really to make sure that it is, it is a property that is gonna be now owned by the city, um, so it will allow us, it would just give us the flexibility that we need to, to use our space, not just currently in what we need, but really in the future as needs change. So just really exciting for this opportunity for our, our community members participating in these programs and just for our city in general. So thank you for everybody, uh, who made this possible, thank you.
Absolutely, Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
So team, as I mentioned, sorry, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I am in support of these programs finding a new home. As, uh, Counselor Jimenez mentioned, the intergenerational literacy program serves our adults in Chelsea that are learning English as a second language, and the Chelsea Opportunity Academy is currently placed in our Chelsea High School on the fifth floor, I believe, or on the top floor. Once the Chelsea Opportunity Academy moves into their new home, it will be able to serve a thousand students at our Chelsea High School. And so I'm really excited and I'll be in full support of this, thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
So I would just, uh, uh, say I agree with my colleagues, this is an exciting thing to do. Um, I'm glad that, that not only we're, we're moving forward with a permanent place for the Opportunity Academy, but this was a really good deal for the city. So we wanna talk about doing business smarter, trying to, trying to actually, uh, not just save money, but really make a good investment for the city, this is it. And, and so I just wanna, uh, give kudos, uh, uh, to everybody involved in this thing, because this was a great deal for the city, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Alright, seeing no other speakers? Let's vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent, Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted.
Okay, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Council President De Jesus. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to execute a grant easement to A U Broadway LLC, an affiliate of A R X B U LLC, and such easement shall be for the construction and maintenance of footings attached to the new development occurring at three sixty-one Broadway in Chelsea, Massachusetts. And be it further ordered that the city manager may reasonably vary the form and substance of the proposed amendment as necessary in order to facilitate reaching a final agreement to be executed by all parties.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections?
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes, vote to adopt, Counselor Teshi.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent, Counselor Sandiget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten in favor, zero opposed, one absent, order is adopted. Move on to an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that the city manager instruct relevant departments to ensure the garden cemetery is open to the public from dawn through dusk daily and is cleaned and landscaped at least once per month.
Would you like your dog under suspension, like to speak on it?
Counselor Recupero, seeing no objections, you have the floor.
The, the city did a great job fixing the cemetery, but it's been closed. People wanna go inside, and then, and wouldn't be, they weren't, they couldn't get in. So that, I believe that it should stay open from dusk to dawn, and at least clean it once in a while. We used to have a company, like the city manager says, and their company did a crappy job. So maybe now that we have a park division, they can do it. We don't have to hire outsiders, we can have insiders from our own department doing it. And it's a, it's a great thing that we should, and something else, too. Uh, the debris that's inside of that place should be removed. Boards, whatever is inside should be removed. And, uh, nobody should be able to allow the park inside or anything like that. That, that's shouldn't, you know, that cemetery is, is like a museum for us, because they don't bury people there anymore. So it should, like, be considered sort of a museum, that the city should take care of, and it should stay open. And I think the city manager's gonna do that, and it's a good thing for the people that are buried there, so they, relatives can go and see them, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, uh, Robinson?
Yeah, as you know, the cemetery is being, um, brought up to real standards. Actually, they did the wall, they did all the headstones. The city has committed over six hundred thousand to the project, and we're gonna continue to make sure that it's well taken care of. Good for you.
Alright, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that the city manager explore feasibility of opening a museum in the City of Chelsea dedicated to promoting the history of the city.
Under suspension, no objection, like to talk about, speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, counselor.
Uh, this city has a big history, it started from the beginning of our country until now, but there's nothing here that tells you about our city. There is a place that we can go and see, but that really only tells you a certain part. What we need is to tell the story of our city, from the junkyards when it burned, all the people that are there, and the history that's there now. That this city evolved in so many different ways, and now we have a new breed of population that's living, passed from the old breeds. So they should be preserved, the future generations should understand what this city is, and what this city has meant to all the people that have been here. There's ma- much, much history in here, from the fire, from the gray fires they came out of here, everything that is part of our city should be recognized. And I believe maybe we should have it within the library, a small room in the library, that we can just put together and say, this is the place, where you wanna find out what Chelsea's history is, come and look at it. We, we really don't have to spend gigantic amount of money, we already have a library. So dedicate a section of that to a small museum, that people can go in there and look at it. They can understand where we come from, where the people that are here originated from, and where we're going in the future, thank you.
Okay, thank you, counselor, moving on.
Next order of new business, we have an order introduced by the council president. Order that in accordance with section two dash six of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council formally waives the remainder of the six-month probationary period and formally appoints Mohammed Rahimi as Legislative Aid Admin Assistant to the city council for a period of five years at the pay grade of M M six step one, as outlined in the pay scale for exempt employees in the City of Chelsea, with the duties and responsibilities as described in the Legislative Code. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council formally approves a waiver of residency requirement set forth in the Code of Ordinances.
Counselor Recupero would like-
Accept and file the communication.
So this-
So this is not communication?
Yeah.
I would move to, to, um, to adopt-
In the first reading, we can vote on it?
Yes, yes, to adopt on the, the order under suspension of the rules, if there are no objections.
Okay, Counselor Teshi, I am seeing no objections, we may proceed.
Motion was adopted unanimously under suspension. Next order of new business, we have an order introduced by Counselor Teshi. Order that in accordance with section two dash six of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, Chelsea City Council formally reclassifies the position of clerk to the city council as M M nine on the pay scale of exempt employees of the City of Chelsea. And be it further ordered that the Chelsea City Council formally reclassifies the clerk to the city council as M M nine step one upon passage of this order.
Counselor Teshi?
Madam President, the reasoning for me putting forth this, um, proposal is, under current regulations, the council is not allowed to increase any amount of money on the, on any item of the budget. Um, we are only allowed to decrease it. That being said, I do believe there are necessary actions the council must take to make sure that employees of the city that are doing a tremendous job for our city are met with the same respect and, and level of appreciation that we have for them. Um, and I find it necessary that our budget reflects that, and for that reason, I am putting forth a request to, um, reclassify the pay scale for the city council clerk from M A, M M eight to M M nine. Through, through the long hours I've spent working with the council, the clerk has been nothing but outstanding in terms of meeting every single deadline, in terms of meeting every single request, and I wanna make sure that he knows we appreciate him for such, and we cannot let him start thinking of going somewhere else. We gotta make sure we keep him, and for that reason, we gotta make sure we show him that initiative, that we want him to stay here, and he doesn't get any thoughts.
Is M M nine a director?
Thank you, counselor. Uh, Counselor Recupero?
What, M M nine, what does that consist of, is it a director?
Uh, we will have our, uh, city solicitor, thank you Cheryl.
No, actually, M M ten is a department head. M M nine would be, on the, on the M M scale, would be, um, underneath a department head. Maybe a manager, a senior manager, but these are exempt employees, so it's, they're not, he's not a, he would not be a department head, or considered on the department head level under the administration, but he's not under the administration.
So what does that mean?
I believe that the order before you is to have the same pay scale and step increases as someone who would be paid an M M nine on the, um, exempt employee pay scale.
So, but you, so, an M M nine is really a department head, right?
Most department heads are nine or tens.
But you said, we on a different scale?
So, the employees who work for the city council office are not employees under city administration. They are treated, when it comes to benefits, similar to those who are exempt employees, such as- They are treated, when it comes to benefits, similar to those who are exempt employees, such as myself, the city manager, and other exempt employees. So if you want to mirror or look at like positions or salaries, I believe Counselor Teshi has decided that MM nine is similar. I believe that's what's before you.
Counselor Jimenez also has a question.
I don't have a question. I would just like to move this to a conference committee.
Move the current item to a conference.
Move to a conference committee, um, so that we can discuss further, understand the differences between the, the different scales. Like, I don't think it's, we should not be voting on this to approve it right now. I think we should have a conversation to make sure that we have an understanding of what, what, what the change is, have a full understanding of it so that everybody on the council can. I don't necessarily oppose it. I, I just want to make sure that we have all the information that we need, um, in terms of, you know, what that would mean for, um, uh, this position not becoming a union position. I would love to get Cliff's thoughts on this. I, you know, I just, I just don't want to take a vote without having the opportunity for us to, to have further conversation on the topic.
Madam President, if I can respond, I will say that, um, in, in terms of looking at our council schedule, um, I believe we will not be having another council, um, meeting, um, as a whole. We will just be having subcommittee meetings. So we would be revisiting this. Do we have one? So I would ask, instead of moving it to a subcommittee, we can move it to a second reading. And I will just say for, um, information sake for everybody, the change between MM eight, which is eighty-six thousand dollars, MM nine is ninety-six thousand dollars.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
Ninety-six. That is MM eight, MM nine.
All right, Counselor Coopero, please, one mic.
I have a motion on the floor.
Um, so, so...
Counselor Coopero.
So my motion. So my motion would be...
I know Counselor Teshi, you introduced the original. So are there any, I'm just going to go back to the motion that was introduced. Are there any objections to the motion? If there are, we will be returning then to Teshi, who seems to also have another motion on the floor.
I object to the motion.
I'm, I'm not asking for under suspension. We can do a roll call vote on my motion to send it to subcommittee if that is the proper procedure.
You want to send it to a subcommittee?
Correct. The conference or a second reading.
A second reading.
A second reading.
A second reading can be done in conference.
Okay, so can we vote on the first motion that was introduced on the floor, which is to send this item to a subcommittee conference?
Correct.
Okay.
If we vote to not do that, does it mean we can take a roll call vote to?
If we vote to not, if we oppose this amendment, we will go back to the original motion? And it seems like Teshi will be sending it to a second reading.
What's the difference between a, a second reading would happen at a subcommittee, no?
I think a second reading would just give some time for counselors to investigate and talk and get answers instead of meeting.
Sure. Okay, I'll withdraw my motion. Sure.
Okay, so we are withdrawing this motion now. We are going back to our original motion. And Counselor Teshi, you have the floor.
My motion, um, and I, and I will say, just, uh, make sure you, you know, we think about it diligently. We will have a couple of days to revisit this issue. But again, we are looking at the person who is handling all of our matters at the city council. And that job oversees every single thing that comes before the council, and that means every single thing that goes on with the city whole. So we are talking about a really big responsibility, and we are talking about somebody who has that experience and who has proven it time and time again. So with that being said...
Thank you, Counselor. One mic, please, Counselor Coopero. Thank you, Counselor.
With that being said, I move, uh, this matter to a second reading if there are no objections.
No objections on the floor. Okay, moving on.
Our final order of new business, we have a proposed home rule petition introduced by Counselor Jimenez Rivera for a special law authorizing the City of Chelsea to impose a real estate transfer fee.
Madam President.
Counselor Taylor.
Can I ask, if we, uh, waive the rest of the reading and move to a, uh, subcommittee on conference?
I'd like to speak on it.
All right, um, okay, so are there any objections to the motion that Counselor Taylor introduced? No? Okay, so we...
Sorry, can I object and clarify or have a point of clarification or no?
Point of clarification?
All right, let's do the clarification and then Counselor Jimenez, you can speak on it.
My, my question to Cliff is, we, um, uh, sorry, our last meeting is the twenty-fourth, correct? We have multiple subcommittees scheduled. So I object to adding another subcommittee on conference for one item. When I think we could discuss this either as a second reading or add it to the next city council agenda. I disagree with the motion of adding it, adding another meeting to our calendar in June, when we have like ten. I agree that we need to talk about it. And I just think we need to allocate the time in an already pre-existed scheduled meeting.
Okay, Counsel...
For the record, the council can schedule subcommittees for when they come back from summer break. So just because it's moved to conference now, doesn't mean you have to meet on it before you go on summer break. You can meet on it when you come back in September.
But that doesn't include having a, a meeting during the summer for a conference.
It also does not preclude having a meeting during the summer if the council requested.
Okay. All right, moving on to comments?
There is an objection. Is it withdrawn?
Was the objection withdrawn? Your objection was withdrawn.
So we can have it after.
Great. Sure.
Objection withdrawn.
Perfect. Okay.
Conference.
Conference, moving it on to conference. Do you still want to speak on it? Yes, Counselor Jimenez.
Great. Um, Chelsea is in the middle of a housing crisis that's engulfing not just our city, but every community around us. I think we're all in agreement. People can't afford their rent, let alone the opportunity to buy a home. Whenever I talk to my neighbors across Chelsea, the first thing that they say is that it's getting harder to live here, and they're getting pushed out. Housing is also one of the council's top priorities. And so one of the tools that I believe we need at our disposal to keep families here is a real estate transfer fee, which is a proposal that is before us now. This home rule petition would allow the city council to vote on a fee on property sales over one million dollars. So if you sell for less than a million dollars, this fee would not apply to you. Um, but then anything above that, it would be a two percent, uh, fee on the, on the, uh, on the sale. The fee can be as low as half a percent. It can be as high as two percent. That would be up for the council. And the funding from that fee would go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to support the development of affordable housing across Chelsea. Also in the language are a number of exemptions for this fee. This includes first-time home buyers, gifts between family members, and any transfer that's meant to advance affordable housing. Um, we can also discuss about other potential exemptions that would make sure that we target only those who are best able to afford the fee. So people like, you know, people who are speculating on properties in Chelsea. The landlord who has multiple units who can very, you know, very likely afford this type of, uh, uh, fee. The developer that's looking to charge rents that are well over market rate. That's the kind of, uh, property that, that this fee is looking to, um, to, to, to address. This proposal is meant to target only the most expensive transactions in our city. My understanding is it would only be about six percent of the transactions in the city. We, I, I want to make sure that we have proper data as we discuss this, so I will be making sure that we, we have that for any discussion, uh, in the future. Um, as part of the discussion at subcommittee, we should look at how much various versions of this proposal would have generated for Chelsea in previous years. Um, my understanding is that a vast majority of the properties that would be subject to this are commercial properties and very large multi-unit residential buildings. So the impact on, uh, Chelsea homeowners would be minimal. Um, I would want to make sure that we have, uh, data for the past few years as I mentioned. Um, the idea here is to target the moment when the people paying this fee are suffering the least. If you just sold your house for a million dollars, or if you sold your commercial building for a million dollars, you should be able to pay two percent. You have a significant amount of, of, of funds coming to you from that sale. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not targeting people at their lowest. We're really targeting people at the moment that they have, um, significant funding, uh, coming to, to their homes. One measure that I would like to explore as part of this discussion, which I'm not sure about the legal implications of it, is to create an exemption for people who sell their homes to people who have been living in Chelsea already. We talk often about the importance of helping our renter neighbors achieve homeownership in the city, and this could be one way to incentivize that. If you sell to somebody who's here, you save a good chunk of money and you help a Chelsea family achieve homeownership. We can also create other exemptions, increase the threshold so that it's not one million dollars, um, and create, talk about the, the percentage. We can have that conversation, and that's what I want to make sure that we are having as we go into, um, the, the conference discussion. And I would also like to note really quickly that this is only the beginning of a conversation. A transfer fee was proposed by Governor Healy in the Housing Fund Bill that's going to be debated soon in the State House. Eighteen other municipalities have introduced a proposal like this one in their own municipalities. Having the legislature pass this home rule petition would allow us to have access to a tool. We can then decide to use it or not. So I'm looking forward to this conversation when we'll discuss this in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, okay, it is ten o'clock.
Public announcements.
Uh, we have public announcements. Please, please keep them brief. Uh, Counselor Garcia.
Super quick. Our graduates, yay, two thousand twenty-four class is graduating on Saturday. Please arrive at ten AM or a little before. Councils, council members will line up and, um, and join our wonderful twenty twenty-four class. Thank you.
Okay. That is all. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you especially to our office for preparing this very lengthy agenda. Um, and have a good night, guys.
Good night.